Pass, good evening, everyone. Welcome. I don't know what the background noise is. Welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting of February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I hope that you're all well this evening. Our first item on in the meeting is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, thoughts, comments, suggestions, or changes they would like to make to the agenda? Yes, Dr. Carol.
Thank you. First of all, can someone promote Cora Redmond, please, to be a panelist or student representative? Thank you. As far as the agenda and the order of the agenda, I would like to suggest that we move citizen speak up before the policy subcommittee report.
We would like to move citizen speak up to before the policies of community report. Does anyone on the school committee wish to comment or add to Dr. Carol's suggestion? Member Rosemary.
Yeah, I I I agree with that, but I'd also like to have the policy report be before the chairs report also.
Okay, so the suggestions from Member Rosemary and Dr. Carol is to move the policy subcommittee report to before the chairs report and to move citizen speak to before the policy subcommittee. Correct. So let's just, let's hope we understand this. So we're having, we're having our calls to order. The superintendent is going to have the Tucker Elementary School Site Council presentation. We're going to have the Milton Coalition come and present to us. And then we are going to have some district updates and then we will have citizen speak and then we will have the policy sub, policy subcommittee report. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments about that before we make those changes?
That's good with me.
Good with you? Dr. Craighead? That's okay. All right. No comment from Dr. Craighead or myself. All right, so we're going to move. So number one, number two will be superintendent's report. Number three will be citizen speak, number, uh, is that ready? One, two, three, policy subcommittee, and then the chairs report will be after that. All right, that's the agenda for this evening. And with no further ado, oh, we need to approve the agenda so that we have a roll call vote and and record your attendance at the meeting. So is that, that's the agenda on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Member Ross Denny?
I was just seconding.
Oh, yes. And do you approve the agenda?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Who am I missing? Anybody? Myself? And Member Rosemary?
Yes.
All right, six zero. All right. Without any further ado, Superintendent Chat, you are up.
Well, thank you very much, Chair Abahat. With us this evening to kick off tonight's meeting is Tucker principal, Dr. Elaine McNail-Gamai, and she's accompanied by her members of her site council. So I would turn it over to Dr. Elaine McNail-Gamai and let her introduce those who are with her this evening to give you a quick update on what's happening at Tucker.
Thank you. Evening, everyone. Just gonna try to share my screen here. And I'm gonna try to toggle between two devices. Sorry if I'm shifting a little bit as I'm doing that. So thank you for having us this evening. We're excited to have our few members from our site council presentation, uh, from our site council.
Dr. McNail, Dr. McNail, before we go any further, I'm just gonna ask folks to take themselves on mute. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Dr. McNail.
Okay, thank you. So we will start with our just some introductions and everyone will have an opportunity to to speak. So you'll be able to see them. But again, my name is Elaine McNail-Gamai. I'm the principal at Tucker. We've got Kirsten Driscoll on, our assistant principal and curriculum coordinator. We've got Latifah Frank, who is a Tucker parent, Emily Speck, who is a Tucker parent, and Carrie Hurley, who's a Tucker parent, joining us tonight. So we're really excited to kind of share some updates from last year around this time when we last had a chance to speak with you and just kind of recap what we've been doing. So I know that you all know Tucker, but just want to recap that we are a proud preschool to grade five school. We've had preschool in place. I think this is our, maybe our sixth year or so. And it's really a great part of our school. We have a student body and faculty which very much prides itself on diversity and achievement. We have also the half-day preschool as well, which is the integrated program. And we have really forged over the last few years some great partnerships that we think really support and develop our school that includes with BU School of Social Work, Historic New England, and the Northeastern University Center for STEM. We feel like all of that together really makes for a collaborative team. And, you know, we are consistently working to remove barriers towards student success. So when we were with you last year, we made a few commitments and that was, you know, based on all of what we had learned over the worst of the pandemic months. I know that we're not quite out of the pandemic to say post-pandemic, but we made a few commitments at the end of last year that we went into this year with, and those were ensuring that students had materials, ensuring families had barriers removed, and continuing to foster a community of respect, trust, and care across our school. And each year at Tucker, we generally have had a theme for the year. Last school year was collaboration, and obviously that could not have been more aptly chosen. We needed the collaboration of families so much day to day. We were truly teaching together through last year. And so when we thought about what our theme would be this year, the word driven came to mind. And so that's kind of what we started the year with, this idea of being driven. If you are a parent at Tucker, you would have seen this in our opening letter or a faculty member, this was our opening presentation, with this idea of having a compulsive or urgent quality towards a driven sense of obligation. And, you know, that's really how we felt feel about our students. So for the presentation this evening, where that was kind of our frame for the year, we've kind of broken it up into this driven theme that we've been talking about. So being self-driven, student-driven, data-driven, and results-driven. So we're gonna kind of walk through with that lens in mind. I wanted to share this quote again. This is something we shared at the beginning of the year of what self-driven means. So disciplined, intense focus on the job at hand, resourceful, finding a way to succeed no matter what the obstacle is, ingenious, thinking differently and innovatively, voracious, being motivated, competitive, and not quitting until achievement is attained, and entrepreneurial, having vision, getting excited, and dedicated work ethics. That's where that quote ended, just the word drive. And this was an excerpt that we found to start the year for our faculty. And, you know, as we're working on these presentations, we share them with central office. And when we met with Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, she said, I really think you need that N. You need that N on there because you've been talking about driven. So she challenged us to think about what the N should be, and non-negotiable came to mind. So N for non-negotiable, prioritizing success in all forms. So we, again, just kind of wanted to frame as we go into this that we felt that all of those words you just heard, being creative, being ingenious, being driven, were really important when you think about the demographics of Tucker School coming in this year. So last year, we shared, you know, the March and April data breakdowns with you for students who were remote and hybrid. And for, and most of you know that Tucker had a substantially higher percentage of students that were remote last year. And so thinking about our students coming back this year at the beginning of the school year, we actually went through the roster class by class and highlighted any student that was new to Tucker, just brand new, or maybe they had been there and then had, you know, gone elsewhere for a year and returned. Or anyone who, although not new, had been remote the majority of the previous year. And when we did that, we had some pretty stunning numbers in terms of what that looks like. So if you look in that far category for February, those were the numbers of students across each grade that were either new or returning at the beginning of the school year. Obviously, our preschool and kindergarten, unless they attended preschool, of us were largely also new and returning. But when we added that up, that actually was forty-nine percent of our school. So half of our school coming in this year with essentially starting with us, you know, from I don't wanna say ground zero, but having to restart, you know, the school year and re-acclimate to being in the building. And so we really thought that that was important in thinking about how we approached the school year. All right, so gonna turn it over. Not sure who's gonna take this one, but I'm gonna turn this one over to talk about what we did, but kind of those numbers in mind.
I'll take this one. Hi, everyone. I am Kirsten Driscoll. I'm the assistant principal and curriculum coordinator at Tucker, and I'm happy to be here. Good evening. But so another thing that we did was we really kind of tried to leverage what we learned through the past two years. And keep in mind what we knew to be true. So one of those things that we did last year was that we handed out supplies to every single student in our school to make sure that everyone had the same supplies going into that difficult year. This year, we knew that that was really helpful, removing those barriers for materials and supplies. So while we didn't hand that out to every single student, we did make multiple backpacks available for students who needed them with any of the school supplies that we were requiring this year. Another thing that we learned to be true that we wanted to continue were the importance of trying to remove some of those barriers for family participation and collaboration. So last year was our highest parent-teacher conference attendance rate. And we found that virtual conferences and meetings are really accessible to families. They have a much easier time making those work for them with their busy schedules. So that's something that we've continued this year and had great success with, being able to meet with families virtually. We also continued our family engagement with a, some culturally responsive summer professional developments through We the People. We also made sure that we continued our intervention and enrichment for all of our students. So something that is happening next week is that we are going to be having a district beyond the bell program over our February break for elementary students. So we're looking forward to starting that. We also made sure that if students had COVID-related absences, teachers were available to meet with them two times throughout the day, helping them feel connected to their classroom and their schoolwork, making sure they knew exactly what they had to do. And then finally, this year, it was really nice to be able to bring back many of our other enrichment opportunities that we didn't have a chance to run necessarily last year. So with COVID protocols in place, we were able to bring back our group music lessons, making that more accessible and affordable to families. We brought back our Tucker Basketball League, which we run on Thursday nights for our fourth and fifth graders. And we're very grateful to former Tucker parent Winston Daly and Leah Salippo, who both run that program for us. We've continued our partnerships with Town Sports to try to get our Tucker students engaged in Town Sports. We had Milton Youth Hockey come and run a program for us on one of our half-days, teaching our students about hockey basics to try to get them involved and excited about youth hockey. And we've been able to bring back some of our clubs like gardening, yoga, mindfulness. We have some diverse reads book clubs happening, and then our morning math program. So we've been happy to kind of have those things offered to our students this year. I am turning it over to Carrie.
Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Carrie Hurley. I'm a member of the Tucker Site Council. I'm a parent at Tucker. So we entered the year with a focus on leveraging what we have learned and what we knew to be true. And this was particularly important with prioritizing relationships and family engagement and maximizing the insight from family groups in the day-to-day. And one of, and we're showing a little snap of it, but Family, Tucker Family Curriculum Night, evening sessions to help families stay connected with, from last year on what a day-to-day looks like, how to support the students in completing work at home, and sample work product, and how to solve problems the way we do it at school. The sessions were recorded, so everybody can refer to them. And they were posted on the family curriculum website along with resources to use at home. They, another amazing ad, in my opinion, is the the updates, the smores newsletter. It's all of the information in one place. It's absolutely amazing for parents to not have to, you know, go through all sorts of different areas to get their information. I actually think there's even, it's been enhanced having this amazing tool. And the blackboard system automatically translates for families based on home language noted, which is really super important, particularly at Tucker, in my opinion. And I think that's all for this slide.
So, oh, yes, sorry, Carrie, thanks.
No, I just, I couldn't remember who goes next.
Yeah, even after two years of virtual meetings and presentations, it's still hard to get the grasp of this, but we'll get there. So part of our opening presentation to staff, you know, we were making a commitment to not only be self-driven, but also be data-driven. So we presented to them our MCAS data. And while this was not my favorite data to present, I'll be honest, our scores were below both the district and our school averages in past years. But it's important for us to remember that this was the first time our third graders took the MCAS. Our third and fourth graders took the MCAS for the first time last year. And then this was the first time our fifth graders had taken it since grade three. And we knew there were many challenges the year before, or last year, rather, with kind of shorter school days. And then when we came back to a full in-person, we had some very large class sizes, different technology proficiency needs of our students. And we didn't have any of our beyond-the-bell programming. So, you know, we were looking forward to starting this year because we had a hundred percent of our staff returning. So we presented this data and we all knew that we could do better and there was more that we could do. So we made a commitment as a school to really be data-driven this year. You know, we were gonna use this data to make sure that we perform more targeted data reviews to help inform our intervention services and instructional practices this school year. So if we move on to our iReady data, you can see that thankfully, I think our data review and our targeted instruction has really proven to be beneficial and helped. So starting last year, we started taking the iReady Math Diagnostic. And this is something that is given three times a year for all of our students K to five. So it will be given once in the fall, once in the winter, that we just finished an assessment round on, and once in the spring. It's a tiny bit of a different window for our K students. They'll be taking their winter diagnostic in the next few weeks. So overall, we had great gains. As you saw, as a school level, so many students have improved. So it's a little bit hard to see, but this is by each grade level. So if you're looking at the, it's like dotted green line, those are students that are, sorry, at the middle or above grade level. The green, just straight green, is on grade level. Yellow is one grade level below, and then our red is more than one grade level below. So for every single grade, so this shows grades four and five, and then our kindergarten, we had improvement from our fall to our winter. So I'm happy that we're using our common planning time. I'm very grateful to our district math coordinator, Brian Seelig, who has spent a lot of time with our elementary teachers, kind of showing them how to go through this data and use this data to inform their instruction. And it's proving to be really helpful because we're seeing great gains. So another assessment that we take is our Lexia Rapid. And again, I'm very grateful to our district ELA coordinator, Kat DeRoche, who has done the same. They've dedicated time to visit our teachers during common planning time to help them really understand the data and dig through it and see how to use it to inform their instruction. So again, if we look at our K to two Lexia Rapid data from the fall to the winter, we're seeing really great gains. And we're using this data to inform everything that we're doing, like our reading specialist interventionists and who they're working with. So if we look at three to five as well, we had great gains in all of our domains as well from our fall to our winter, really strong improvement. So while it was difficult to kind of deliver our MCAS data at the start of the year, we know that's only one assessment piece. Same with Lexia Rapid and iReady, but, you know, we're making an effort to be a data-driven school that's using this information to kind of help us inform our instructional decisions every day for our classrooms. I'm gonna turn it over to Emily Speck, Tucker parent.
Yes, I'm Emily Speck. I have a fourth grader at Tucker this year, and I have a seventh grader at Pierce who spent his formative years at the Tucker School. So the, the achievement of those gains that Kirsten was just talking about don't just happen automatically. There's been a lot of effort at Tucker to help make those happen. So there's been some structures in place to really know what students need and intervene to meet those needs. So that includes student support team, which focuses on academic needs of students and and how they are doing in terms of achieving the knowledge that we need them to be successful. In addition, there's a behavioral health team that includes a bunch of key players at the school who look at the needs of students that might go beyond what the academic needs are, but might influence their ability to be successful in school. So that includes members like the nurse and the family outreach liaison and the adjustment counselor and the admin assistant, and they can look for patterns in students' needs, home needs, attendance, and things like that that might affect their success at the school. Kirsten also mentioned, and I think Elaine also mentioned, of course, Tucker's biggest strength is the people who come every day and meet the needs of our wonderful students. So we have all of our staff back, which is really amazing in this time of the great resignations. Those staff have then been using structures to really improve their already strong practice, such as common planning time where they've been focusing on the different academic areas with the support of the curriculum coordinators across the district. It's really exciting that we now have a social studies coordinator who can also support both in that academic area. They've been looking at this data, having data meetings. And then there's additional support to help with the literacy piece because we know that strong literacy gets the students ready to be successful in all of their academic areas. So there's new support at the fourth and fifth grade level, and there's also new support in some of the younger grades as well to help with that. And then I think as mentioned also is that some of the programs that had to had to be put on pause because of COVID have come back into place that really helps students connect with academics beyond the classroom, including the Rising Star Math Program, the Mentoring Program, the Beyond the Bell activities, the Continental Math League meets, which my fourth grader just recently participated in, the enrichment lessons, which the, the enrichment clubs, which are a a real favorite of the Tucker students, and then the group music lessons that were mentioned earlier.
So thinking about being student-driven was actually well-timed in our review and consideration of this because, as, as I know you all know, we're in the process of revising and condensing the strategic plan. And so, you know, as we were thinking about this student-driven part, we felt like it kind of perfectly connected to the goals of the newly revised or in process strategic plan, which is around personalized learning, safe and supportive schools, and equity in learning, and all of those to us, you know, really connected to this student-driven aspect because, you know, we can do all of the work with the data, we can do all the work at the faculty level. But if we don't get the students invested in their own learning and we don't make it engaging for them, we're not gonna have the success that we are hoping for. So we, what we want to do in this section is kind of break down for you each of these three sections and what we're doing to kind of connect, recognizing, of course, that this is a newer component to us, the strategic plan. So we hope to kind of build on this as we go, but just to give you a little bit of an insight to it so far.
So I think this one is me again. So kind of thinking about personalized learning, some of this goes back to the things we've already mentioned. And I think this is the area that as a parent of Tucker students, I really feel like Tucker goes above and beyond and exceeds, and that's building relationships, really getting to know all of their students and making making the students part of a larger community that they all feel really invested in. So that has happened with tours this year for, we think about that large portion of students who weren't in the building much last year that Elaine mentioned earlier, kind of helping them feel at home again in the physical. kind of helping them feel at home again in the physical space. Then there's the, all the enrichments and clubs that we mentioned earlier. And then the teachers supporting each other to become better at their craft. So their teacher leadership teams and peer observations are really structures that help teachers support each other in seeing how to improve their practice in working with those, those students one-on-one, differentiating, meeting their needs where they're at so that they can be really successful this year.
So for the goal around safe and supportive schools and learning environments, I kind of echoing what Emily said, I feel like this is something near and dear to us very much so at Tucker. And we have a teacher leadership team that over the past, I'd say about four years, have really dedicated our work around this in making sure that our teachers build strong relationships with their students. And even in conjunction with that personalized learning, like we share at the start of the year surveys that you can send to your class to kind of get to know their interests and things that they like so that you can tailor activities and learning around their interests. So I, I really appreciate that from our teacher leadership team, and I'm grateful to them and the work that they all do. But also this year, we sent out in Telespark surveys for elementary students to kind of get a gauge on our social emotional learning. We are fortunate to have a social intern, social work intern from BU. And she's working very closely in conjunction with our adjustment counselor and making a point to have a lot of lunch groups and recess groups and get to know some of our students. As we know, there's a lot of need right now for creating safe and supportive learning environments, sometimes too big of a caseload for some of our adjustment counselor needs. And so we've really relied heavily on our BU social work intern, and we're grateful to have her supporting our students as well. She's also involved in a lot of our enrichment beyond the bell that we do at Tucker. So it's kind of wonderful that she's like made a point to stay longer than necessary to. We just, the past two days, Elaine and I were fortunate enough to attend a restorative justice training, which was wonderful. And now, you know, we're making it a point that our administrative team is all taking that restorative justice training as we can so that we can start implementing some of that work in our schools. We have a new restorative justice coach, Adina Schechter, and she already has led a PD for our elementary staff. And we're starting circles in classrooms already. She has done that work. I feel like even after these past two days, today I was lucky enough to lead some small circles in moments that needed to have those things happen. And I'm very excited for that work to continue because I really think that is going to help us as a district create these safe and supportive schools and learning environments. We continue to use our PBIS for positive behavior around our school. We continue our Tucker Tiger Board where students can earn stripes as a class and then rewards for good work. And we've really had a big focus this year on citizenship. We actually just concluded a month of advocacy awareness, and students all kind of chose something that they advocate for. And their writing was wonderful, and the different things that people advocated for were really great to hear. They all yesterday got to wear, wear a shirt for our Spirit Week to kind of represent different things that they advocate for. And then we're just continuing to focus on teaching students about persistence and like that growth mindset. So this was a great picture of some students doing a science activity in the hallway and just showing that, you know, it's okay to fail, retry and test again. So that growth mindset.
I believe this is me again. Equity and learning. Equity means creating conditions in which all learners have the resources and support they need to reach their full potential in order to thrive and achieve his, her, their personal post-secondary goals. And family collaboration and engagement is a big part of this, supporting how and where they are needed, enhancing family communication. Once again, the smores newsletters, Blackboard translation. We had addressed earlier or mentioned earlier the student supplies that were shared and provided, making sure that everybody has the resources they need to be productive at school. Classroom supports to break into smaller groups to benefit all the students, ensuring that there are academic and enrichment activities to support and challenge the students. Some examples of this are the morning math program, which my son had his last session this week, and he's going to be sad not to have it continue. But the writing club, which was another popular one. Today, they finished off that with an awesome session of writing their own comics. Group music lessons, running club, which I think is phenomenal for kids to have that ability to exercise and get the energy out. I have three boys, so I'm passionate about exercise to get energy out. And also basketball club, which was mentioned earlier, having the benefit of a former Tucker parent come back and take the time Winston Daley. It's amazing. My son's participated in it. It's a great program, and I hope to see more Tucker students participate in the Milton programs. So just wonderful there. And then student and Title One Services, we mentioned that, removing participation barriers, which is, you know, ongoing collaborations within the community. Milton Hockey Clinic in the fall. There was a terrific session recently with therapy dogs on the half-day. That was very popular. And then the current Milton Food Pantry Drive, the Super Bowl Drive, collecting cans for the Milton pantry. So just, you know, making our, you know, contribution to the community as well.
Okay, so just looking ahead, our next steps. You know, we all, of course, want to continue what we think is good work, and we're starting to see some, you know, good, good growth and good progress. So continuing to work, close the achievement gap and address disproportionality data in collaboration with families. As we mentioned earlier, we've got these new literacy positions in preschool, kindergarten, first and second grade. And that's due to some of the grants that were funded through the Special Education Department to reduce that disproportionality. So seeing that through and, and looking at that data over time. Continued focus on restorative justice and inclusive practices. As we said, getting more individuals trained and making it just a normed practice within our schools. Continued focus on moving back to in-person assemblies and outings to enhance learning and maintain engagement. We had a really robust field trip experiences before, and we're hopeful we'll get back to those soon. But in the short term, you know, we're working to bring some really unique things to the school. We were able to end last year with a few outside activities, like our annual unity night. So we're hoping to do that again. We have an artist in resident lined up for May. They'll be coming to the school to do sand mandala art. I'm really excited about that as well. And continued focus on maximizing outcomes from our preschool and early learning program, how to include some of our preschoolers here because they make such a big difference in our day-to-day. And we know that changing their trajectory is really going to be supportive of us down the line as they get older into third, fourth, fifth, and all the way up to 12. And then again, taking our, our, our theme of driven and kind of translating it into the strategic plan. I think just the only other thing I would say is, one of the other things we started the year talking about was that we had read an article of the faculty team around a hard reset. And this idea of, you know, sometimes you get these little updates on your cell phone and, you know, you can kind of just like, kind of keep chugging along. But eventually, sometimes your device or your laptop, you just have to do a hard reset and kind of risk losing some of the data or risk losing some of the contacts. But this idea that sometimes you just can't always go back to exactly where things were. So we've talked a lot about the fact that we don't really want to necessarily go back to the old normal. The old normal didn't necessarily work for all of our students and all of our families. And I think that's something we were kind of just moving along and not really thinking about. And, you know, okay, well, that family didn't come to conferences. This family didn't come to school with all the supplies. And not necessarily thinking about what our role could be in changing that for them. So, you know, we are kind of having this hard reset and making a new normal, hopefully where things will be more collaborative, where families will continue to feel that they can speak up and let us know what they need, where students will feel like they have their voices heard. And we're just hopeful that that will continue to help us to be successful at the school and as a team and other school community. So those are our next steps at Tucker. And I just want to say, I know Latifah joined us. So if there's anything we didn't add, and I know she's going to also help us with some of the questions, but she's on too, if there's anything you want to add.
I was just thinking about the great programming that we've picked up on this year that, and I was trying to think of things that weren't mentioned. And I think two really important add-ons this year is the, the two book clubs, the diversity book club that just started. And also the Get Ready for Middle School Book Club has been really, really amazing. My fifth grader comes home every week talking about the conversations that they have had and is eager to read the book that they're reading, you know, chapter by chapter together. And so I think that, you know, in, in terms of thinking about how do we get our, our students, you know, back into the swing of things and also ready to move on and be, you know, wonderful citizens across Milton. I think we're doing a really, really good job with the additional programs that are happening, whether it's before school, during school, and after school. It's been really, it's made a huge change in, in, you know, in students. My three students, they were remote all last year, and so they're excited about going to school. They're excited about morning math. They're excited about writing club. My fifth grader is excited about the strings program and, you know, bringing her cello to school and not playing in isolation with her private teacher, but playing in a group of peers and her friends and not knowing, you know, that other friends that played strings. And, you know, even though there are different abilities, like they're having fun together. And I think that all of these things really make for a wonderful elementary school experience and build confident students. And so, you know, with the driven, and I think it go, it's aligned. And I also think that all of these things go with the, with the priorities, the personalized learning, the equity in learning, and the safe and supportive schools. Like we're hitting all of those marks with these additional efforts.
Thank you. And that's our presentation.
Thank you. It's really good.
Thank you. And I guess, oh, sorry, hit the wrong button. Thank you, Dr. McNeil-Gamay in Tucker Psych Council Team. I guess at this point in time, I would leave it up to members of the school committee who may have questions for them. I'm sorry, I see a lot of hands up on the blue屏. I didn't see who went first, so I'll start with Dr. Elaine Craighead.
I actually think that Member White was first, but I'll just, I'll just go first. And I, I, I love the, the organization around driven. And, and I, I think that you've lived up to that goal that you've set for yourself. But I think you also need to add one, which is community or relationship or team-building driven, because that's what you're doing. And you're doing a fantastic job of it. How well you've been able to do through COVID is, is amazing. It speaks to the tight-knit community that, that Tucker is and what Elaine, you and your team have been able to continue to foster during difficult times. And by the way, Elaine, in case you're not seeing it in the chat, people are saying Elaine is amazing, and they're not talking about me. So kudos to you. You're doing a fantastic job. I also really admire the multifaceted approach to students. You know, the emphasis on physical activity, as Carrie was pointing out, the, the running group. And, oh, the basketball teams, as well as all the emphasis, of course, on academics, but also social and emotional learning. So you're, you're really covering everything. Carrie was so enthusiastic about the smores newsletter that I'm hoping you can send us all a copy of the smores newsletter because I would really, really love to see it, as well as something around your restorative justice program for younger kids. I think it's great. I think it's absolutely necessary that you start that at the elementary level for a couple of reasons. One is it doesn't come out of left field when you get to middle school and high school. Like, here's what it is and here's why you're doing it. But secondly, it can make those interactions at middle school and high school so much better, so much richer as well. So I was really, really happy to see that as well. One last thing, I'll, I had a lot of things to say, but I'll, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll stop with this. The, the, the statistic around the students who are new to Tucker, either starting or restarting, was really powerful. That's huge. And that's both a challenge and an opportunity to kind of restart in some ways, things that, that you're, that you have restarted, but instituting new programming, which you're also doing. So I was really impressed. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Craighead, for your comments. And just so you guys know, the smores format in terms of the newsletter is universal across the district. All of the principals are doing it, the same layout, but the content might be slightly different. So, Member White?
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. It really warms my heart to see all the hard work that's going on and all the wonderful things that are going on at Tucker. I had two questions that I'll ask at the same time. And the first one was to, to tell me more about the after the bell activities and initiatives that you're doing and whether or not you specifically invite students who might need some interventions? Or is it open to anybody who would like to participate? And the other question I had was, I really liked that you're offering the supplies to all students. And I was just wondering how you're funding that, whether the PTO gives donations for that effort or whether or not the community is invited to do that. And a third comment is, I would love to come in and visit Tucker someday when you're doing the restorative justice classes. I'd love to see what that's like. You know, I'm semi-retired now, so I have some time to do that. So thank you very much.
Sure. We would love to have you. And to answer your question about supplies, I think it was a combination of the PTO. And also last year, what we did through the year is we kind of had like supply re-ups that we put out to the whole community. So we did like spring supply refresh. These are the things we need. So we actually had a lot of supplies that came in last year that we still had. So we were able to kind of start the year with those. And then we also, a great person in Milton who I think likes to donate anonymously, but she works at Children's Hospital, and she usually does a drive at the beginning of the school year for us through children's and gets us backpacks and, and a ton of material. So she did that again for us this year. And then your third question around participation, it's actually a mix. So a lot of the enrichment is just by signing up. We do a pretty low fee. It's usually like six weeks for maybe $20. But there's always a scholarship option, so nobody's turned away. And then we just have a few that are based on data that are invitation-only. But I would say the vast majority are open to everyone. So we put out a fall enrichment calendar, a winter one, and we'll be shortly doing a spring enrichment offerings.
Thank you. Member, I mean, Dr. Carroll?
I think it was Member Ross Denny and Member Rose Maren, and I think I'm last.
You got it.
Thank you, Lizzie. It was very generous of you. I first want to say that I'm a proud Tucker Tiger mom. And Elaine, ever since you came to the district and you've turned Tucker around, you've brought so much pride to the families that attend that school, and you've created a wonderful culture where whether or not you're part of that 49% that's new or not, you felt, you feel welcome in the school. So my question for you is, how has the 49% new kids impacted the culture of the school? So my question for you is, how has the 49% new kids impacted the culture of the school? And do you feel like, um, students have become well-integrated into the system that you have? And I just want to end with a thank you. You're, you're amazing and so is your faculty, and I hope you take great pride in the work that you've done.
Thank you. I'll, I'll answer, and then if anyone wants to add anything on, I will say, I think it's actually been a pretty seamless transition for the most part. And I will say that I was really, we, our, our PTO funded so many robust opportunities virtually last year that we had, honestly, we probably had better community circles last year. We, we were doing them monthly. They were virtual, whether you were home or you were in school. And I think it created like a really nice community. I actually think that the families really liked it too. I probably got more feedback from the families about the community circle presentations and assemblies, um, than the kids last year. So I think that, um, it, it kept, it kept the rhythm of the school, whether you were in the building or not. And one of the things we started last, doing last year was recording, um, like video morning, morning messages essentially. And so we've done that this year, and I think that's like really helped also still maintain connection. And for especially the younger kids to be able to like actually see our faces and things like that. So I think, um, they've still like made a lot of connection, um, with the adults in the building. And so, yeah, I would say that, uh, it's been pretty, pretty seamless, um, overall. And I don't know if there's anyone, I, I know we have some folks who had remote students last year, what you would say would, about the transition?
I might jump in quickly, um, and just say, I think it's not necessarily easy for the students to acclimate, but like, you know, kids like hanging out with other kids. I'm impressed at how well the parents and family members of our new students have acclimated. And I really attribute that to our Tucker families and people like our PTO, who I think do an amazing job, getting new members or doing outreach. Our diversity committee is huge, because I think that's part of their work that they do is reach out to some of our new families and say, join this committee, you know, come to our diversity club meeting, join our PTO meeting. We're gonna have an information session for everyone. So I, I'm really grateful just to the Tucker families for their, you know, job in welcoming in new families so well and being so accepting. I think they do an awesome job of that. So, thanks Tucker parents. You guys are rock stars.
Next. I think it's member Rosemary.
Yes, me. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McNeil-Gamay and, and your team for a wonderful presentation. And it's, it's so great to hear about all this going on at, at Tucker School. I, I, um, am just so pleased to hear how you're applying the lessons learned from, that came out of this awful pandemic, um, that have really enhanced the, what you're doing at, at the schools and, um, change, changes the normal to a new normal that, um, is, is gonna do great things for, uh, for Tucker School and, and our community. And, and I think, like you're saying, the participation and, and parent-teacher conferences has, has gone way up and, and, um, and other online events, that, that access, um, has, has been a wonderful thing. In fact, if you look tonight, we have over 300 people watching your, um, presentation, which I'm very glad to see. And it's wonderful that through, uh, the pandemic, that having remote access to opportunities like this are available, and, and thank you for taking advantage of those. Um, and of course, as, as, um, being involved with the strategic plan, um, I'm thrilled to see your implementation of, of our strategic plan before it's even approved by the school committee, which is just fabulous. And, and it really is, uh, wonderful to see how, how aligned what you're doing at Tucker School is with the plan and, and bravo to all of you, and thank you all for coming.
So I just wanted to add my thanks to all of you for the great presentation and echo what you were just saying, member Rose Marin. I was really impressed with that, um, you're speaking to this new normal. And I think that's something that we should also be doing as a district. Kind of thinking about how we're learning from our experiences over the past two years and how we can, um, not sort of, as, as we move, um, into a new phase with COVID, not reflexively go back to everything the way that it was before, if that wasn't really working as best as it could, um, and think creatively about, um, you know, trying new things. So I, I loved that you showed how you're modeling that for kids. And in how you described the way you're working on that at Tucker, you're modeling that for the rest of us as well. And I'm really, I, I'm hopeful and excited to kind of think about implications of that for, for our whole district. Um, I was obviously really excited to see those great gains in the formative assessment data. I know that that is, that, you know, a, a result of the really hard, careful work of the teachers day in and day out. So I'm just really thankful for that. Um, and I am just so thankful and proud also to be part of the Tucker family, and I don't take that for granted. So thank you all so much for everything you do.
Thank you guys for having us. And I did forget to say that it is the year of the tiger for the new, for the Lunar New Year. So we are also very excited. And, and as you said, uh, Dr. Carroll, thank you to our faculty team that's been like amazing this year and working so hard to get us these gains, because they are in the trenches day in and day out. And it is, it has been a harder year than even last year, and so we can't thank them enough as well. So thank you.
So if there's no more questions, I would express my thanks as well. Thank you, uh, Dr. McNeil-Gamay, and thank you to your team, your parents, your volunteers, and, and extend that to your PTO, who gave a couple of shout-outs for all of the work and support that they've done for your community. So thank you guys very much for joining us this evening and, uh, sharing the great things that are happening at Tucker. Thank you. At this time, uh, before, before I go on to another agenda, I just want to, uh, introduce Margaret Carrolls from the Coalition and the work that, uh, the, hopefully the Coalition will be doing to partner with the Milton Public Schools. Margaret Carroll, I would turn it over to you to maybe introduce those who you were with. I think it's, believe it's just Stormy. But I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jet. Hi, good evening. My name's Margaret Carrolls. And I'm one of the co-directors of the Milton Coalition. I'm here, uh, tonight with our other co-directors. Sorry, Lauren. As you know, the Milton Coalition brings together community stakeholders who work together to prevent, reduce, and address the use of alcohol and drugs among youth, as well as related mental health challenges. I'd like to thank Superintendent Jet for inviting us here tonight to talk about the importance of data collection. There are two important surveys that are coming up, um, this spring, and I'd like to just describe them to you. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is an anonymous tool designed to monitor risk behaviors that contributed, contribute to the leading causes of mortality, morbidity, and social problems among youth and adults. Hundreds of schools across the country participate in the YRBS. It's a program of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and it's implemented in conjunction with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DESI, and the Milton Public Schools. Milton first administered the YRBS in 2014. Eventually, a school committee instituted a policy of administering the survey every two years. It was conducted again in 2019, and given the challenges facing the schools and students in 2021, it was postponed. And the high school will be implementing the YRBS again this spring. The Youth Health Survey is a similar tool that comes from the Massachusetts Department of Health in partnership with DESI and the Milton Public Schools. The YHS is also implemented across the Commonwealth and was conducted here in 2014, also in 2019. Again, this 2021 survey was postponed, and it will also be implemented in the spring at Pierce. Let me reiterate that this data collection of health risk behaviors is done at the middle school and the high school. There is no data collection on health risk behaviors done at elementary schools. This anonymous and confidential method of data collection is critically important. The responses are analyzed and used to identify community-level trends and behavior so that they can be addressed by the schools and the community as a whole. It's used to set policy priorities, identify appropriate evidence-based strategies, and direct funding locally and statewide. In short, this data collection and analysis is the science that tells us what the problems are and whether what we're doing is helping to solve those problems. The Milton Coalition is a partner with the Milton Public Schools in the data analysis. While the survey is implemented by the high school and the middle school, and the data belongs to the Milton Public Schools, the Milton Coalition pays for the analysis of the data by an independent statistician. The results are then presented to the school committee, and then the Milton Coalition completes a full community assessment report that includes the YRBS and the YHS analysis. This report is then presented to the community. You can find our past community assessments on our website, Milton-dash-coalition.org. The Milton Coalition has developed a YRBS fact sheet and a YHS fact sheet. These will be distributed to parents and guardians of students who are scheduled to participate in the survey prior to the survey date. However, participation is optional. Students can choose not to take the survey. Students can choose not to answer individual questions. And parents and guardians can also opt their students out of participating. And all of this information is included in the fact sheets. The grant that funds the work of the Milton Coalition would not have been possible without the administration of the YRBS and the YHS. It has brought over $250,000 per year since 2018 to the town. These funds have been used to support so, social services embedded in the police department, free mental health referral services for the entire town, hundreds of hours of education to parents, youth educators, caregivers, youth workers on the topics of prevention, drug and alcohol use, communication, parenting, leadership, mental health, and many others, including professional development with the schools. Prior to 2014, there was no entity in Milton whose focus was solely on the behavioral health of Milton's youth. The Coalition models a proven public health strategy, and it would not work without the participation of representatives from many different sectors in Milton, from youth, parents, educators, public safety, faith leaders, business leaders, civic organizations, and more. We value our relationships with all of these organizations, as well as our partnerships with organizations in, and in Milton and from across the region. Our Coalition members and other supporters feel so strongly about the importance of data collection that they signed on to a statement that reads as follows. "We, members of the Milton Coalition, as well as other Milton leaders, are united in the firm belief that collecting data about youth risk behaviors is critical for identifying priority areas for programming and resource allocation that will help keep Milton youth and families safe and healthy." It's signed by the following 22 individuals. Karen Cahill, principal, Lucy Carroll, Milton School Committee, Giselle Damash, Health and Wellness Subcommittee and Milton Coalition, Pat Desmond, Milton Times and Milton Coalition, Z Fitten, Health, Health and Wellness Subcommittee and Milton Coalition, Stephen Keel, Milton Coalition, Superintendent Jet, Milton Public Schools, Chief John King, Police, Milton Police Department, Caroline Consella, Milton Health Department, Susan Cook Vazer, Tufts University and Milton Coalition, Kim Kroger, Manic Community Health and Milton Coalition, Loriann Marquez, BID Milton Hospital and Milton Coalition, Vicki McCarthy, Milton Coalition, Jackie Morgan, Milton Public Schools, Molly Prano-Langer, Milton Coalition, Laura Richards, Milton Board of Health, Ada Rosemarin, Milton School Committee, Beverly Ross Denny, Milton School Committee, Margie Skier, Tufts University and Milton Coalition, Ashley Stockwell, Blue Hills Community Health and Milton Coalition, Elizabeth Thomas, Citizens for a Diverse Milton and the Milton Coalition, and Elizabeth White from the Milton School Committee. Uh, there were many others that wanted to sign, but the deadline had passed. So, um, I'd like to encourage any parents and guardians that are listening to this who have questions about the survey and who might, um, to reach out to your principal, Principal Fish, or Principal Cahill. And, um, thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have right now.
Thank you, Margaret. Dr. Craighead?
Um, I don't have a question. I just want to say that the work, um, that the Coalition does is so important and beneficial to this town. And I am one of those people who wanted to sign, but got in after the deadline, because I did not meet the deadline, um, in all honesty. Anyway, um, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I appreciate you, um, going through the steps of the fact sheet, the, uh, the fact that this, that it's optional, that the students can opt out of any question, and that parents can opt out their students if they wish to. So, um, I appreciate that. But I would urge, um, all parents, um, to really, um, uh, consider having your student, uh, take this survey, because, um, because as, uh, Margaret Carrolls points out, that it's, it's really crucial in, um, seeing whether the work that we're doing or that the Coalition is doing and the schools are doing, um, is, uh, is producing the effects, um, that we wanted to have. And, and knowing where, what areas we need to work on as well. So thank you very much.
Exactly. Thank you.
And, uh, Chair Abahat?
Thank you, Superintendent Jet. Thank you, Margaret and Stormy, for coming tonight and presenting to us. It's really nice to see you both again. It's been a long while. I have a question about whether or not the survey questions are available for previewing to families before.
All right, yeah. I can answer that, yeah. The, uh, both of the survey, the questionnaires are being finalized at the moment with both the YHS and the YRBS team. Um, the surveys will be available. I think there will be a physical copy or multiple physical copies available at the front office, um, at both schools. And parents are, parents and guardians are able to look through the questions, um, at, at the schools themselves.
Thank you so much. I appreciate both of you coming tonight. That is part of our policy that we, um, we voted at the beginning of this school year, and I just want to make sure that those questions are available to the community. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Well, Margaret Carrolls and Stormy Long, uh, thank you guys very much for your presence this evening, and I appreciate your patience. And you're more than welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting. If not, definitely, uh, take a break. But thank you very much for coming this evening. I look forward to, uh, working on this project with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, uh, Chair Abahat, at this time, I want to, uh, share, uh, a presentation that I shared at the, uh, Policy Committee Meeting.
Can you stop for a second? Dr. Carroll, can you, um, would you prefer that you would like people to speak first before the presentation?
Um, yes, I think that's what we talked about.
I'm making sure that.
That isn't speak.
Sorry, Superintendent Jet, I apologize for interrupting you. So, okay, so then Superintendent Jet, we're going to move to Citizen Speak, which will be next on the agenda. Um, Citizen Speak is 15 minutes long. Um, if you wish to speak at Citizen Speak, you can raise your hand and you will be promoted. Um, we ask that you say your name and where you live, um, that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you address topics that are on the agenda, and that you do not make personal comments about people or individuals in the community, the administration. If you do so, you will be asked to leave Citizen Speak. So with no further ado, I'm not really sure who, who is a co-host this evening? Anybody?
I could be the co-host, and I could kind of elevate people in terms of, uh...
Sure, that would be great, Superintendent Jet. We are starting now at 8:05, so 15 minutes from now will be 8:20.
Uh, if, um, someone from cable is available?
Yes, uh, this is M A T V. Mr. Jet and Ms. Dexter, you're both co-hosts.
Okay, I'm not, no longer seeing that anymore. Oh, I see it now.
Uh, if it's, I mean, if I can complement to this, I can assist and just let the first person see. All right, fantastic.
Uh, the first person I see on here is that I would elevate to promote to, uh, chat, I mean, to promote as a panelist to speak will be Alyssa Perkins.
Yes, Superintendent Jet? Welcome.
Hi, can you see me and hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so my name is Alyssa Perkins. I live at 108. Perfect. Okay, so my name is Alyssa Perkins. I live at 118 Walcott Road. I have one child in Tucker and another child in Pierce. I am an emergency medicine physician. I have a background in the epidemiology of infectious diseases. And I'm here tonight to speak about the safety of lifting the mask mandate in Milton Public Schools at the time that DESI allows us to do so on March 1st. So I think that being as cautious as possible, using every potential mitigation measure to keep schools open and safe, made a lot of sense early in the pandemic, and I was a vocal supporter of doing just that. But now, at this point, we have so many more tools, including more effective ones in our arsenal. So it makes sense to peel back the ones that have significant downsides, such as mask mandates. There are other tools, though, that we'll keep in place. Vaccines are incredibly protective against severe disease, and we have done such a good job in our community of vaccinating both our adults and our students. We have other tools in our arsenal that we didn't have previously as well, including the availability of high-quality masks that allow one-way masking to be effective in disease prevention for those that are at either higher risk or more risk averse than others. In addition, we have novel, effective, and available oral and intravenous therapeutics that prevent disease progression for those that are infected, as well as pre-exposure prophylaxis medications for those who might not mount a sufficient response to the vaccines. Finally, we have accessibility of diagnostic tests so that even so that those who have any symptoms can easily test themselves, and if positive, not even introduce COVID into the school buildings. I know that the idea of not having an explicit threshold for ending and therefore restarting mask mandates might sound frightening initially, but I don't think that those metrics are useful as the context of the pandemic changes so rapidly that any metric that we were to come up with would be quickly outdated. I was actually part of the team at the state level that developed the 80% masks rate recommendation, but I don't see that as a successful metric since it was based on a concept of herd immunity that was actually rendered obsolete by Omicron and its vaccine evasiveness for infection. There really are no evidence-based metrics at this point on which we can base policy. I'm not saying that without metrics, we would insist upon remaining with a mask optional policy no matter what. The couple of things that I want to point out here are that first, we certainly should not be making decisions on mask policy based on case rates since vaccines have effectively divorced case rates from endpoints that really matter, such as severe disease, hospitalization, and death. Case rates might very well ri- very well rise over February break, but because of that disconnect, we ought not base our mask policy on that. What we should base it on is if at some point in the future we were to see that vaccines are no longer as protective against severe disease or the therapeutics cease to function, I would absolutely recommend that we reinstate mask mandates. And this could be seen in increased hospitalization rates for COVID in children.
Perkins, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you have reached your three-minute limit. If you could wrap things up, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
There are others that would like to speak.
Sure. I think that we need to manage the situation in front of us and have the ability to pivot when necessary. I don't think that things will get any safer, so I think that it is imperative that we remove these mask mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins, for coming this evening and sharing your thoughts. Next, Superintendent Jett?
Next on it is Regina Murphy. Give me one second. Should be coming in.
Welcome, Regina.
Can you see me and hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Great. Good evening. My name is Regina Murphy, and I live at 35 Alvin Avenue. I have a third grader and a first grader at Collicott. I would like to start my comments by reading to you the first paragraph of the memorandum issued by Governor Baker and the Massachusetts Department of Education on February 9th. It reads, "After consulting with medical experts and state health officials, the commissioner will not renew the state mask mandate after it expires on February 28th. Effective on this date, the DESI mask requirement will be lifted statewide. The Commonwealth's high vaccination rates and widespread availability of COVID-19 testing for school personnel and students supports this decision. The commissioner will continue to monitor public health data, consult with medical experts and state health officials, and issue further guidance and/or requirements as needed." So what does this statement tell us? It tells us that the Department of Education has extensively reviewed COVID data, analyzed the relevant school-related metrics, and consulted with multiple medical experts and health agencies. Based on this extensive analysis, DESI has determined that it is safe to make masks optional on February 28th for all public school students across the entire state. They have done their due diligence. My question for this school committee is what additional data metrics or medical expertise are you bringing to the table tonight to warrant dismissing DESI's guidance and extending the mask mandate in the town of Milton? I attended the policy subcommittee meeting on Monday, and there was no data nor metrics discussed when the recommendation was made to push the mask mandate to March 14th. This is unacceptable. For this school committee to extend the mask mandate for even one more day past February 28th, I would expect to see a mountain of data supporting your decision, and yet, there is none. Putting aside data for a moment, there was also no discussion on Monday about the negative mental health impacts the ongoing COVID-related restrictions are having on our children. My first grader, her name is Rosie, asks me every single day when she can stop wearing a mask to school. She tells me that masks make school hard because she can't breathe and she can't see her friends or her teacher. These kids have done absolutely everything we have asked of them related to the pandemic for almost two years. Enough is enough. It is time to move on. Over the last 48 hours, 721 Milton residents have signed a petition urging the school committee to follow the DESI guidance and end the school mask mandate on February 28th. There is no data that supports extending the mandate for even one more day than is necessary. It should also be noted that almost every town in our local area has already approved or intends to drop the mask mandate on February 28th, including Quincy, whose school committee just voted in the last hour to drop their mandate on the 28th. So please, on behalf of the families of Milton and behalf, on behalf of our children, follow DESI's lead and make masks optional on February 28th. Let's move on and give our children the sense of normalcy that they so desperately need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Regina, very much for coming this evening and sharing your thoughts. Appreciate it. Superintendent Jett?
Person I see is Al- Allison. Doesn't give a last name, but I'll promote to panelists.
Thank you, Superintendent Jett.
Is Allison popping in? Up there.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Perkins, who spoke, and thank you, Regina Murphy. I know that Citizen Speak is optional and received an email back from all of you that it's not something you have to do. I couldn't help as a parent but feel disappointed that people who make decisions for our children do not want to hear from parents. You, as a school committee, have handled the news of mask lifts with such negativity and fear. How can you emotionally disconnect from your own fear to make decisions for us if you are double masking and wearing face shields outside? Instead of celebrating and moving forward like Quincy, Foxborough, Westwood, with the recent news, you have divided this town to mask versus non-mask, which should have taken five minutes for subcommittee to talk about on Monday, turned into members' comments as we aren't there yet, even though we have test kits, vaccinations over 70%. What about grandma? Still fearing into children that they are going to kill their grandma? Masks have shown not to work. That should have masks have shown to work. No data to prove it, not medical professionals. You would need to wear an N95 to prove that. And lastly, I wish we had metrics to guide us with masking. Yes, you do. It's called data, DESI, Governor Baker. If these metrics aren't high enough, yeah, they will continue to never be high enough for you. But you failed to mention once in that whole subcommittee meeting about the mental and education for our own children. We, as parents, are paying for tutors, speech quality. Children haven't seen a mouth mimic in a word in two years. When was the last time any of you were in the classroom to hear how many times it takes for students to hear words and repeat them back? Or have you talked to any of students to see how they feel about learning with a mask? Asked other high schoolers besides your student panelist, Cora, we have special needs students denied with doctor approval. You should have to.
As I, as I mentioned, we are not mentioning people in the, in your Citizen Speak. Thank you.
You should have to answer to these students why you don't have their best interests. The masking of our children is contributing to factors in loneliness and isolation that grow this mental health crisis. You will, because of your actions, have created a bully, bullying of masks versus non-masks because of the fear you have created. Students who should, if given options, feel okay to take off their mask will be now be scared. Where is the training for teachers on the effects of two years without a ma- with a mask on? Did the school committee create anything to get ahead to build back our children's self-esteem and educational metrics? Now, once did the committee create programs for our students to create equality for maskless and non-maskless students? You have failed these children and sacrificed their most. Why, thank you for, you have failed these children and and sacrificed their motion and educational too long. We, as parents, will do anything to put our children first, and that's giving them masks optional. For the first time, I am sad, anxious, sleepless about a town I call home and disappointed where I live. But I will fight for my children because they deserve better than 314 because nobody trusts you. You have proven with.
Allison, Allison, you have reached your three li- three-minute limit.
Wrap it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. You have proven with vaccination high in lack of acknowledgement of families who did get COVID over Christmas, natural immunity. All listening to, please vote for 26 and give this community a parent voice. Why, thank you for volunteering. It's time to realize you are out of touch inside our schools without children in them. We need new members with children on the frontline. We've signed over 700 signatures for mask optional. We ask you to vote this way and show us you are listening. You are either with us or against us. This is why over 300.
Oh, Allison, I'm I'm gonna have to ask you to stop now because you are not respecting the limits of school Citizen Speak, and someone else would like to speak. We are reaching the limit of our time. Thank you. Superintendent Jett, we will have one more speaker for three minutes, and then we will wrap up Citizen Speak.
Regine Jean Charles is coming into the room. Sorry, I didn't realize I was on remote again.
That's okay, Superintendent Jett. Thank you for managing this, which is not really part of your job description. Welcome. Dr. Charles, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself?
Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Regine Jean Charles. I am the parent of, oh, two Pierce Middle School students and two Tucker Elementary School students. I am also a proud member of the Milton Anti-Racist Coalition, and I just want to thank all of you. I think probably contrary to the previous speaker, I am actually filled with pride tonight as I look at this school committee meeting, especially as a Tucker parent. I want to just thank all of the folks there, Elaine, and the entire team, the parents who presented, the people on the site council there. Thank you so much for this presentation. It has been a very challenging year, and I have seen firsthand how Tucker has truly risen to the occasion in making sure that our kids are happy, healthy, whole, and feel a robust sense of belonging. So I am truly, truly grateful. And I just also want to encourage all of the school committee members as you consider this next vote about masking to just keep equity at the center of everything that you do. I applaud you for the ways that you have espoused the Mark platform in the previous months, and I just encourage you to continue to do so. And there are many of us in this town who lovingly support you and the work that you're doing and are proud to see folks like Members Ross Denny and Members Carroll, who do have children in the schools and who are on the front lines of this fight. And so we appreciate you. We are grateful for you, and we are here to support you in the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Charles, for speaking this evening and to all of our citizens who came to Citizen Speak and shared their thoughts and feelings. And thank you, Superintendent, Superintendent Jett, for managing that portion of the meeting. It is much appreciated. Okay, Dr. Carol, I do believe that you are on with Superintendent Jett and Nurse Coughlin for the policy presentation. Is that what we're going to do next?
Yeah, thank you so much. So I do have a report to open the discussion of the mask policy, but I think we're going to begin, if I'm not mistaken, with an overview of some information from Superintendent Jett and our Director of Nursing, Kim Coughlin.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you so much.
So thank you, guys. If you just allow me a few seconds to just share my screen. And if someone could just unmute and let me know if you could see the screen because I won't be able to see it.
Yep.
Yep.
See it.
So very quickly, before I start this presentation, I do want to let the viewing audience know. This is a presentation I shared with the Policy Committee on Monday morning at 7 o'clock. So it's very similar information, but I will provide pockets of updated information as we go through. But I didn't want to change it completely because I didn't want people to feel as though it was a completely opposite presentation. As many folks know, the Milton Public Schools' face covering policy was first implemented back in August, August 20, 2020. And then it was revised this past August, August 25th, 2021. The mask mandate just required all students and staff to wear masks indoors at all times with the exception of a few, with a few exceptions. That's when eating lunch, drinking, mask breaks, and or outdoors. Masks were required on all school buses and school vans. And and that was the policy, and it still remains the policy until otherwise determined by the school committee. I wanted to share with you a little bit of data that we had, and I, I know a lot of people have been watching the cases, but I do want to let you know this slide right here was updated February, from data from February 11th, which was last week. Remember, the meeting that we had was on Monday morning. We don't get updates on reports in terms of positive cases, hospitalizations, or anything like that, only on weekdays. So typically, what you would do is you you get three days worth on Monday, which would be Saturday, Sunday, and then that Monday. As of February 11th, it was 2,599 cases, which was down considerably from the 22,000 cases that we saw back in January, particularly in January 29. Tests, there were a number of tests that were the PCR, the molecular test. The most common one is the PCR test. But we have been providing the at-home rapid antigen test to all of our students and staff who opted into the program, the new state's optional program, testing program. Hospitalizations were down 51%. Folks that unfortunately were in the ICU were down 44% in deaths. And as kind of a morbid talk topic, but they were down as well. And I say that with all due respect to anybody that's on this call or within the community that lost a loved one due to COVID. I wanted to talk a little bit about what was happening in in the Norfolk County area. So what I did is I looked at all of the counties in Massachusetts, and I just wanted to report it. This is not a slide that James Jett or Kim Coughlin made up. This is taken from the state. Once again, the case is 2,599. So the headers that go across, the daily average per 100,000 people, the 14-day change, hospitalization, and then deaths, and quite frankly, the vaccination rates, which I will get to in just a second on the next slide when we look at Norfolk County. I say those headers because the slide that I present or display next doesn't have the headers, but I would go to, I would talk to each category moving from left to right. If you look down, second from the bottom on your screen for Norfolk County DA's, I mean Norfolk County, we had a total or average of 180 cases in Norfolk County. Norfolk County is comprised of, I believe, one city and about 26, 27 towns. Out of that, out of the Norfolk County area, 180 cases, 25 per every 100,000. That was down almost 71%. And then when you start looking at the 14-day change, as stated, down 71%. Hospitalization, 31 people in a hospital in this, from this area, that was down 43%. Once again, unfortunately, you have 5.4 deaths. But on a more positive note, 78% of the people who are age-eligible. But on a more positive note, seventy eight percent of the people who are age eligible in the Norfolk County area vaccinated. And and that trend actually continues. Again, this was a slide for Massachusetts presented from John Hopkins. This was a slide that was presented on Monday morning, but I want to reiterate that this data has since been updated. And you could see, and when I talk in a second, you're gonna see a number of these cases have declined. I mean, a number of these categories have declined since even Monday. So right here, you have the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. This is their data dashboard, the state's data dashboard. What we presented, excuse me, I have a little something on my screen. I'll move that out of the way. What we presented on Monday, we presented two thousand four hundred and ninety ninety nine new cases. As of today, it were one hun- one thousand six hundred and fifty three new cases. As you could look over to the all the way to the right, there were one thousand sixty two patients in the hospital for COVID nineteen. That has dropped as of this afternoon to eight hundred and thirty two hospitalizations. So it's it's down considerably. And then if you look right in the middle under the green tab under testing, the percent positivity, the seven day average of percent positivity. As of last week, it was three point seven four percent. It is now down to two point ninety percent. I don't have that slide for you, but if you go to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health website and you click on the data dashboard. You could hover your cursor over these hyperlinks and it'd give you all of the information that I'm that I'm reciting this evening. For folks to fact check that. So again, I would say that the the situation we're in seems to be improving significantly and moving quickly. And now we wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening in Milton. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the Milton Public Schools Head Nurse, Kim Coughlin.
Superintendent Chat, and thank you, everyone, for having me this evening. I would like to present some of the data that will help inform people's decisions and will show some trends and, you know, what we know currently.
Sorry.
That's okay. So this slide that we're actually pulling back up was provided by the Town of Milton. And this actually shows daily cases of COVID nineteen since the pandemic started. It's as you can see, it starts at March twenty seventh, that was in twenty twenty. And it currently goes weekly up until last week. You'll see the spikes that we've had in the town and it shows the cumulative cases. If you look at the trends of this graph, it's important because some of the data that you'll be seeing, these trends seem to be consistent through all the different graphs that we're seeing. So we can go to the next slide. Again, this is just expanding and taking a closer magnifying look at the thirty day COVID cases in Milton. You can see again, the trend is down. Of note, the cases that are reported in Milton with the Board of Health. They are PCR tests. And since there has been availability of at-home antigen testing. You can see that our numbers are a little different in the Milton Public School community, and that's because our community has access to a lot more home testing. So although the trends remain the same, you'll see the numbers will be different. And then I believe there's even a more concentrated look on this slide of what the numbers have been over the past two weeks. And then the seven day rolling average, again trending downward. Wastewater, this was brought into this discussion. Some people, when they are discussing community prevalence, they talk about wastewater and the results. So you can see with this next slide, you'll see with the Massachusetts Wastewater Authority, the South District, which Milton is in. Includes Milton and several other towns. What this graph shows again, from the beginning of the pandemic, March twenty twenty currently. And the trends of this act are similar to the trends that we see in Milton as our community in Norfolk County and in our public school district. Why wastewater is spoken about in this discussion is it shows prevalence, it goes aggregate data. It not only shows Milton, this health system, but all the surrounding communities. And it helps people that are in the Department of Public Health, state officials determine the prevalence because everyone contributes to wastewater. And that helps them decide where they're gonna be spending mobile testing clinics, vaccination clinics, and what communities might have higher rates. So if you hear that in the discussion, that's why we sometimes talk about wastewater. So what's happening in Milton Public Schools and what is our data, which is much more obviously specific to Milton Public Schools? This is a chart that shows our positive cases reported. We report them weekly. It starts the first week in September of this year. And as you can see, the trends mirror what we saw in the wastewater data and mirror what we see in Norfolk County. If you go to the CDC Norfolk County Tracker and what the Town of Milton shows. This past week, which is not on this chart, we reported six cases. And you'll see in the past two weeks with twenty two cases and then the six that were reported today, we are at less than one percent positivity rate. And then to go talk about vaccination rates. So these are the numbers that we have for vaccination rates currently. At our middle school, the students and staff are above eighty percent. We do have to remember that the majority of our sixth graders, which is a third of the middle school, did not become vaccine eligible due to age. Until right before the holiday break. But we are still above eighty percent as a metric there. Milton High School students and staff have been above eighty percent since the fall. And we, as a public school system, under direction with the school committee, had a memorandum of agreement with our staff. And as of mid-November, they were to submit their vaccination rates and our staff immediately responded. They are above ninety six percent with receiving their two doses. This is a chart that we presented at the subcommittee meeting on Monday. This data was as of February tenth. It shows the total students and then the number, you can see the total sixty nine point nine one percent, almost seventy percent. Of our elementary students are considered fully vaccinated. Underneath that is seventy five percent have received at least one dose. You can, I think it's not a hard assumption to make that if people have received one dose, they will be receiving the second. And then the percentage of no doses. I would like to recategorize that as unknown. I can tell you that what we do in Milton Public Schools, we've asked through the superintendent's blog weekly and through. All of our principals' communications home for parents and guardians to send in vaccine cards if their student is vaccinated. We also have synced every single student to the Massachusetts Information Registry. So every student, our numbers have been synced with that system. Every student that that number is given, that percentage of seventy percent is accurate. If anything, it is a little lower than what it might be because there could be some students who have not opted into that registry. Or their parents have not sent in the vaccination card. And then the next slide, after the subcommittee meeting on Monday, we were asked to provide. The vaccination rates while removing the ineligible students. So that would mean our pre-K students who are under five years old, that would account for thirty eight students at Tucker. And approximately a hundred students at Cunningham Elementary. So taking those students who are not eligible due to age out of the metrics, you can see that bumps the percentage vaccination rate to seventy one percent. And then we also provided the numbers for Pierce Middle School, which you can see is at our eighty percent level. And those were updated and resynced as of yesterday.
Thank you, Nurse Coughlin. So what are some of the mitigating fat strategies that we've employed in the Milton Public Schools over the last, over the term of the pandemic? Masks, as of right now, are still required in all Milton Public Schools until further notice. Masks are required on all school buses and vans as it is a federal order. And that is still true for in many of the districts that may have already made a decision. We have air purifiers that will remain in all classrooms and offices. This came up at the Policy Committee Meeting Monday morning. I will make sure that we're communicating with all faculty and staff in all the buildings to make sure that they're on. There was some discussion about the possibility of some of the rooms were turning them off because they were too loud, very similar to a home fan. It it has three speeds, maybe we turn the speed down a little. But in addition to that, all classroom and office windows remain slightly open during the school day for fresh air exchanges. Obviously, during inclement weather or really cold temperatures, the windows may be cracked, but they do remain open. And our rooftop units remain open to enhance the number of fresh air exchanges within our classrooms and hopefully in our offices. Continuing with mitigating strategies, we continue to encourage the routine hand washing by our students and staff. We'll continue to distribute the at-home rapid antigen test for students and staff that opted into it. We'll continue to encourage students and staff to speak to their pediatrician or PCPs, their primary care physicians, about getting a vaccine and booster shot. Again, for students, it's not mandated, but we encourage people to have that dialogue. As you heard, some of the people that spoke about it, that was one of the more effective ways of combating the virus. And we'll continue to encourage the daily health screening by staff, students, and families. And what is the daily health screening? As we've always communicated week by week in the blog, please refer to the COVID nineteen website page that we have on our website. As many people have seen in the last week, so many things that will last couple of weeks, so many things have changed so quickly. I always remind folks not to print things out because because things are evolving so quickly. Go to the website to refer to get the most updated, their live links and they're updated as quickly as we can get them updated. One of the things that I will say, and I know a lot of people were concerned about it. I want people to remember when the commissioner makes an announcement during the school day. Many of our teachers, administrators, and including central office and our school committee members who respectfully have jobs themselves. May not be watching the news to get that breaking news update. And the commissioner does give us a quick heads up, but it goes out public and then it's led to us to make the shift. And I don't want people to think that that's an excuse. Many of the districts that already made the announcements with about their plans were were very lucky, as we were when we opted into the new testing program. That was announced on that Wednesday and we were just lucky to have a school committee meeting that Wednesday night, the nineteenth. And then the deadline to opt into that new testing program, the one that sends home these test kits. The deadline was the twenty first to sign in, or at least for the first batch of it. You could continue to opt in throughout all the way up until I believe it's April twenty second. But any of these, we, our model now last year was protect the par. And this this time around, it says, when in doubt, stay out. If you have some of these symptoms in combination with one another, we ask you to really consider that. And I emphasize every time I get the opportunity. We still do symptomatic testing, but to be very specific or explicit about what that means for us. If your child wakes up and they experience many of these symptoms, we ask you to keep them home. The symptomatic testing for us is if a child arrives at school and by twelve o'clock, eleven o'clock, they start to feel sick. Then we do the symptomatic testing. If positive, you may get a phone call to ask you to come up and dismiss your child. So that's what we mean by that. Vaccine and vaccination, along with DESI and DPH, with Milton Public Schools continues to promote and advertise and encourage people to speak to their doctors or pediatricians for their children to get vaccinated. We understand vaccination has been available now for lo- little more than a year for many of folks. And just one correction, early November was when students between the ages of five and eleven were eligible to get the vaccination. We're also partnering with the Department of Public Health to host the vaccination clinic for eligible students ages five and up. That will take place March fifth at Milton High School. And on Saturday, March twenty sixth, the second second vaccination clinic will be on the twenty sixth. This could be your first shot, your second shot, or potentially boosters, and they will be providing the Pfizer. For folks that don't know, sometimes if you had Moderna for two shots, you could get the Pfizer. You had the Pfizer for two shots, you could continue to get the Pfizer. So I just wanted the viewing audience to know that. All along, people have asked us how are we making our decisions? Obviously, and people alluded to it, that's Department of Elementary Secondary Education. We also had information from American Academy of Pediatrics and looking at their guidelines, the CDC, of course, Mass Department of Public Health, the WHO. The World Health Organization, and then also the Town of Milton, the Board of Health, their website and their data dashboard, seeing what's going on in the community. Throughout this pandemic and throughout my tenure as a superintendent, whether it be intern or permanent superintendent. I've always vowed to say we're gonna look at how COVID cases impact the Milton Public Schools. And one of the things that is always a discrepancy in how we reported it, people will go to the website, look at the Board of Health. But remember, we have a good chunk of our faculty and staff that do not live in the town of Milton. So sometimes even when our faculty and staff were deemed positive, it wasn't showing up in the towns. And we only pivot last year when it had an impact on our ability to receive students. And if you remember last year, the isolation period and quarantine period was up to ten days. We've been very fortunate, even in the month of January, the first week of January, we averaged about seventy four, seventy five faculty and staff out Monday through Thursday. The only time, the only time that we closed school was when it was a snowstorm on that Friday. And so I I commend the faculty and staff. I I also commend the parents who trusted and sent their kids to Milton Public Schools even when the cases were high. So thank you very much to all who made that happen. So again, there's no secret at this point. February ninth, after consulting with medical expert and state health officials, the commissioner said that they would not extend the mask mandate beyond February twenty eighth. Effective on February twenty eighth, that's a Monday after the vacation. Commonwealth, they were gonna be lifting the statewide mandate. And they use the 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 metrics of high vaccination rates, the availability of at-home testing and and to make that decision. Even though they made that decision, I want to make it very clear, it still remains a mandate for all school buses and vans. And that won't change until they get the, because it's a federal order, it's gonna have to come from the federal government in order for that to change. So what are other districts doing? Now, this was reported on Monday morning. And as you can imagine, this information is very old. I took the liberty at last week and it the survey remained live up until it actually is still live. For any superintendent in Commonwealth of Massachusetts to kind of give us their feedback as to whether or not they will be following DESI's guidance. I received seventy responses by Monday morning. At that time, seventy four percent, seventy four point three percent said they were gonna be following DESI's guidance. That red band where it says no, that was, it was one percent. That was one district. I'm not quite sure if they made a mistake and said they weren't sure. And then twenty two point nine percent said that they were unsure, similar to the Town of Milton. Because they didn't have the opportunity to have an open meeting to discuss it publicly with all of their school commen- school committee members present. So what you see here is what are some of the proposed timelines from various different districts? Some districts who made the decision, or at least one at the time, out of the seventy people that responded, said they were gonna go February fourteenth. I'm not sure exactly what the metrics were in their town and what they used. Forty one of the out of the seventy respondents said that they were gonna go pivot on February twenty eighth. You had four that said March first, you had two that said March third, you had nine districts to say March seventh, five that said March fourteenth. And then you had one that said fifteen, one that said thirtieth, and then. One district extended out, well, two districts extended it out to the first and the fifteenth. Now, again, that was information that was collected and put together Sunday night in preparation for Monday morning. But a lot has changed even since Monday morning to today, Wednesday. So what I try to do is put together some frequently asked questions, and I do apologize, I'm trying to get this so I can see some of what I've written. But basically, if the district eliminates mask, the mask mandate, or change their face covering policy, can my child wear a mask? Absolutely, yes. Any student or staff that elects to wish or wishes to continue to wear a mask can do so. One of the things that I will say on this public meeting, because I see it's well attended and I will communicate this in the blog. If in fact, we have teachers who continue to wear masks, I want and I hope and expect the respect that they have. And we would do the same thing for our students who are wearing a mask. Everyone that walks through the threshold of one of the Milton Public Schools, we want to. Everyone that walks through the threshold of one of the Milton Public Schools, we want to make sure that they're not only physically safe, but socially, emotionally safe as well. So I want to make that clear, whatever, or whatever the decision is this evening, whoever continues to wear the mask, that is their right to do it. It's not mandatory that you have to take a mask off. Will the district provide masks? Absolutely. Although we encourage students to bring their own, sometimes it's a comfort level for them. The district will continue to provide masks in the event that one breaks or is misplaced or a student forgets one. What kind of masks does the district have? We have the surgical mask, and we also have the K N ninety-five mask for students and staff. The ones that we had before initially were for staff, we just ordered some for our student sizes, so we have them in student and staff sizes, and they will be on hand prior to, or right there when we come back from vacation. Will the district assistant provide vaccination clinics? I, I want to commend our partners at Manette Community Health Center. I want to commend the town administrator for running testing at the D P W. We have always ran testing in vaccination clinics as much as we could in the Milton Public Schools, typically on a Saturday, and then the town would do the testing on a Sundays. We're going to continue with that. As I alluded to, we're going to do a vaccination clinic on March fifth at Milton High School, and then on March twenty-sixth at the Pierce Middle School as a follow-up. And the reason why it's shifting is because when we're looking at the dates, the events are already taking place on the twenty-sixth at the high school that were already pre-scheduled. So we're going to continue to do that. Will Milton P S continue to provide at-home testing? As of right now, the at-home testing will be available in partnership with D E S I all the way up, and I believe until April twenty-second. And more than likely, they'll probably make a decision either a week or two prior to the twenty-second determining, once they determine where we are as we get closer to that deadline. But we will continue to do that for all of our students and staff. Can my child opt in to receive the weekly test kits? Absolutely. Students can opt in anytime that they want, and they can opt out anytime that they want. And it doesn't matter what your vaccination status is, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. Can my child pick up extra test kits this week? So that he or she can test on Saturday, February twenty-seventh, Sunday, excuse me, February twenty-seventh, before you come in. Yes, Kim Coughlin, myself, we had a conversation. Shaleen Roach, an administrative assistant in the superintendent's office, we're going to work it out on Saturday, the twenty-sixth of February. We'll make test kits available outside of the main office of Milton High School from nine o'clock A M to eleven A M, with the assumption and encouragement that students and staff test themselves on Sunday after, towards the tail end of the vacation, the results usually come back on that kit in fifteen, twenty minutes. If you're positive, we just encourage you to stay out. Can families request a test kit for other members of their household and not in MPS? Unfortunately, we don't. But if you, if you go to the Board of Health's website in the town of Milton, they have it advertised that you could order. You could order test kits, and it takes anywhere from seven to twelve days to arrive at your home. There is a live link on the website that you could order them. So I would encourage anybody that has an interest in doing that to order their test kits for their families. So again, this has been a tough time for a lot of families for almost twenty-three months, a little more than twenty-three months. And we get it, and I, I sympathize, empathize with the families. The light is there, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, we're working hard, we're doing the best that we can. And I will say this, and I'll say it a thousand times over. Many districts are not necessarily on the same page and don't have the same community makeup. Having a district-wide guidance or statewide guidance would be very helpful. But I'm thankful for the, the folks that support us in the Milton Public Schools. I'm looking for that support to continue, and despite the outcome of any votes, my hope is people find it in their hearts that we could come together as a community. And everybody says we, we need to think about the mental health, we need to think about that on all fronts. And so that concludes my comments, and I'm open for any questions from the school committee at this point in time. Yes, Dr. Carol?
Thank you so much, Mr. Jett and Director of Nursing, Kim Coughlin. Can you just clarify, is for the test kits going home before the break, would there, will there also be an opportunity for people to pick them up before Saturday? Like in case they're going away or something like that, and that Saturday morning window won't work for them, would they be able to get them sometime this week?
So you can speak to that. Test kits were given out today, actually, to everyone who had opted in. And that is two test kits, one for this week and one for the vacation week. People that have not opted in, it's a very simple process, their students can come to the nurse's office within the next two days, as long as they fill in that opt-in form, and they can get one. So that shouldn't be a barrier, anyone can pick them up over the next two days from the nurse's office if they so wish.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions?
So I think we're going to turn it over to Dr. Carol. Do you want to take it over from here?
It looks like Dr. Craig had a question before we do the report.
I do. Thank you. I noticed, Nurse Coughlin, when you had the vaccination rates slide up, you were talking about faculty vaccination rates that we had negotiated, we had signed an M O U with the M E A regarding vaccinations. You mentioned something about the two doses. That didn't, the memorandum of understanding didn't include boosting? Do, do you remember that Superintendent Jett? No. So this is just the two-dose vaccination rate? Okay, thank you very much.
Number Russ, any questions?
Oh, and this is for Kim Coughlin, and she's probably going to say, this is the second time I've asked her this. In the slides that Superintendent Jett shared with the rates of COVID positive rates for like the last year and a half, could you bring those up again? Because I have a question that's related to the spike that we saw in the December-January time range. Were we already at eighty percent vaccination at the middle and the high school when we hit that mark?
So at the high school, we were at the eighty percent rate. I know that with certainty. We were not at the eighty percent rate.
If you go back to your slides, Superintendent Jett, keep going. It's the, it's the, one more, I think. Nope, one more. Keep going back. That one.
Okay, so this is town data. So remember, this includes Winter Valley, Curry College, everyone within, you know, the town of Milton. What I can tell you is a third of our student body at Pierce are the sixth graders would not have been considered fully vaccinated, which means two weeks after your second dose, until the second or third week in December. So we know that the age group of five to eleven became eligible, the first day would have been November second. So if they marched out and on the first day got their first shot, they would have got their second shot. If they got it the first day, they could get their second shot the week of the Thanksgiving holiday, meaning they would initially, that first group would become eligible the second week in December. So we saw large shifts in the sixth grade group become considered fully vaccinated mid-December at the earliest till the end of December. And once we started pulling data in January is when we significantly saw coming back from the New Year's break and holiday that Pierce was over that number, eighty percent.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Number Rose, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to just take this opportunity to thank our head nurse, Kim Coughlin, for all she's done for us over the last two years. Your leadership has been extraordinary in extraordinary times, and we all appreciate everything that you've done for us. So thank you, thank you. And I wish we could send you on a fabulous vacation.
Thank you.
But, but I just want to acknowledge all that you've done for us. One question that I had, that, that I saw the, the D P H guidance that was updated this week, and it says that if you're not vaccinated, you should wear a mask indoors. But D E S I says that if you have eighty percent of the people in buildings are vaccinated, vaccinated, that you don't. And I'm trying to figure out what does that mean for Milton Public Schools?
So I can answer that. It is confusing. It's, it's not meant to be conflicting, although I can see how you would think that it sounds that way. So I think you're referring to the D P H guidance that came out yesterday. And so that basically talked about fully vaccinated individuals and when, if ever, they should continue to wear a mask. And it really basically just highlighted that they should continue to wear a mask when indoors, if they fit certain criteria, weakened immune system, increased risk for severe disease. And those were recommendations. Then they talked about if you're unvaccinated, again, and indoors, that they recommend that you continue to wear a mask, especially in areas where there could be high rate of transmission. So I hope, does that clarify a little?
Well, so then, so then, but then for, if we go with mask optional, does that not mean that, that it doesn't, there's not a difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated students?
It does, in the recommendation. So that would be the recommendation of the healthcare provider, that if you fit that category, that you should choose to wear a mask.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Cora, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question about the case numbers that we saw in the presentation. So that first week after we came back from December break, I think we had about three hundred cases. Was that just from that first week, or was that from the full two weeks since we had been in school?
So that's a good question. That was actually two weeks worth of reporting. So half of those numbers were actually reported during the break. So that wasn't return from break, that was two weeks worth of data reporting. And remember, we report from Wednesday to Wednesday. So it was actually from the Wednesday prior to break through break, and then the first two days coming back in. So it really signified the majority of the time was cases that were reported while on break or a couple days prior.
All right, well, if no one has any more questions about the presentation, I'll go ahead and provide the report from policy subcommittee meeting, and that will open the discussion. So the policy subcommittee met on this past Monday morning, where we received a version of that same presentation that Superintendent Jett and Director of Nursing, Kim Coughlin, just shared tonight. There was some back and forth with questions and discussion that led to a recommendation for us to discuss this evening as a full school committee, moving toward a vote on how to move forward after the state mask mandate expires on February twenty-eighth, when mask policy reverts back to local districts. Before I submit the recommendation for us to discuss, I want to first acknowledge our context. I want to thank members of the community for the approximately two hundred and fifty emails we've received this past week, sharing strong views on how Milton Public Schools should move forward at this juncture. We have read them all, even if we couldn't respond to them all. We are aware of the petition as well. I regret that the timing of last week's announcement with our scheduled meeting this week meant we didn't hold an open community forum for people to share their views with us. That is what we would have ideally been able to do. Through the emails, texts, and conversations I've had, a few things about our community have become clear. Many people have communicated compelling reasons that they feel it is not yet time for masks to be optional. The majority of people who emailed us believe we should follow the commissioner and governor's timeline and stop mandating masks on February twenty-eighth. Many are clearly ready for this change, and others are not. We, as members of the school committee, have been reading all the messages and engaging in conversations with a range of people, including medical and public health professionals who do not completely agree about the exact timing of the right way forward. I wish that everyone who thinks they know one hundred percent the right thing to do could read a heartfelt message from someone who sees it completely differently, based on a different experience. I worry that this has become such a polarizing topic. People are lacking empathy for others in our community, including those who have faced legitimate challenges from wearing masks and those who are most at risk from COVID. People have been sharing with us heart-wrenching personal details of their family situations as reasons to both keep masks required and make masks optional. In many cases, people seem to understand the complexity of this moment as the pandemic appears to be transitioning toward becoming endemic and as we approach two years of living with COVID and wearing masks. We need to explicitly acknowledge that, however, the majority of school committee members vote tonight, not everyone in our community is experiencing this the same way. What would be welcome news for some students, families, and MPS staff would be unwelcome news for others, no matter what we decide. Experts have discussed how letting go of pandemic restrictions is harder than putting them in place. So we need to proceed deliberately. This is what we have to navigate together now. The recommendation that came out of Monday's policy meeting is that Milton Public Schools transition to masks being optional for all grades on March fourteenth, two weeks beyond when the statewide mandate is lifted. The stated goal of this recommendation from Monday's conversation was to avoid removing that mitigation layer of the mask mandate at the same time as everyone comes back together after wherever people may travel over vacation or whatever else they may do, to make the transition as smooth and successful as possible. Another element of the recommendation was for the policy subcommittee to reconvene the week, week of March seventh to confirm the plan of moving forward for March fourteenth. I have my own evolving thoughts on this, which I will save for the discussion. We'll be discussing and then taking a vote. But for now, will someone make a motion to open discussion of this recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so the floor is open to discuss this recommendation. Member White?
So, thank you, Dr. Carol, for those wonderful remarks and thoughtful remarks. I echo a lot of what you shared. You know, certainly, I've spent the last couple of weeks reading a lot of emails. People are, feel very strongly about this issue, and certainly both sides of the issue of, of wanting to wait a while and versus wanting to just end it on the twenty-eighth. I've read them both. It's been a very long and difficult, almost two years that we've been dealing with, living with a pandemic. It's been hard on our community, on our families, on the children. You know, I, I am retired now, but I did work in a school system and did have a mask on for eight hours a day, and did work with children in the mental health field who had a mask as well, and it was, it was complicated. It was not easy. During this time, though, we have had a toolbox that we've been able to deal with working and dealing with this virus. We've had masking, we've had distancing, and we've had air purification and filtration in the schools. And lastly, we've had vaccines, and vaccines have been very effective in dealing with helping us stem serious illness and serious disease for the majority of people who have been vaccinated. But we still have to deal with the spread. And in a school system that is overcrowded, we don't have the option of distancing. We do have the, we do have good air purifier and filtration systems in our buildings, and that's wonderful. But without the masks particularly coming back after vacation, I am concerned about the possibility of spread right after coming back from a vacation. So one of the things that I was gonna think about or want to open for discussion is whether instead of we, instead of the March 14th date, we think about a compromise and think about having it be a week rather than the two week period. And so that the last day of masking in the schools would be, if I look at my calendar correctly, March 5th. So everybody would be coming back to school on March 7th and they could have masks optional at that point. So that's one of the things I was thinking about. And then basically if families wanted to continue, if faculty wanted to continue masking at that point, then that would be their, their right to do so. So that was one of my, those are my thoughts as I've thought about this since Monday's meeting. So just want to hear more of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member White. Member Ross Denny.
Dr. Carol, I want to thank you for your thoughtful reflection on both sides of the issue. And I want members of the community to know, as she mentioned, that we do appreciate the many insights that people shared, whether it was writing, calling, or texting their opinions. And the research that the policy committee shared, and specifically about what happens after breaks, is why I support the two week delay in, in moving towards mask optional. A lot of people can make a very good decision when it comes to their family and their family circumstances. We have responsibility for 4,400 different students coming from more than 700 families, as well as 700 adults who are coming into schools every day and have mixed views as to whether or not they feel comfortable coming into a building immediately after February break. And as our data show, whether it was the December 2020 break, the February 2021 break, our students are coming back and they're coming back not well. And I was very surprised to see the spike that we saw in December and January of this December 2021 and Jan. 2022, given how high our vaccination rates are. I'm sure many families heard from their students that they've been sitting in auditoriums or they've had substitute teachers or they're sitting in the cafeterias. Because our teachers are out, whether they're out sick with COVID or out for family reasons, they're not there. And if we do not follow our data, we will have another week or two of students absent because they may have become ill, because they came back from break not feeling well. I think it's fair to say that if we think of this as an equitable solution to accommodate both families, we, both sets of needs of our families that have been shared, we want our students to return to normal. I think to think otherwise wouldn't be honest. Everyone wanted their kids back in school full time and everyone wants to return to a level of normalcy. And if a two week delay is the difference between following our data or proceeding in a way that might reduce the chances that our kids can be in school because they're sick, I think that it's in the best interests of all of our families to have a two week delay. And then it gets everybody to where they want to be, which is mask optional. The last point I want to make is around bullying. I appreciated the fact that one of the members of Citizenspeak has described this new tension in town between the masked and the unmasked. That's, that's an unnatural binary. It's, it's, it is one community. And if there's a reason why someone is wearing a mask, I think it's their right to and they should not be bullied and ostracized. I did get feedback from a teacher that said, if a child is treated unfairly or, you know, harassed for wearing a mask, it should be considered bullying. Should be something that we treat in that way so that students can come to school and faculty can come to school and feel safe in their environment, whether or not they choose to wear a mask. So I only ask that one last caveat, that we make sure that it's a safe space for kids to be comfortable, whether or not they have a mask on. And thank you.
Thank you, Member Ross Denny. Ms. Redmond.
Hi, my name is Cora Ayush here, pronouns, and I am the 10th grade student representative of school committee. So I just want to thank you for putting in the two week delay. I think for a lot of people, including myself, that really helps to reduce our anxiety around this decision. And due to the case spike that we saw after December break, I think that that will really help make this effective and it will work better, I think, with this two week delay. And the other thing that I feel is really important is that we continue to use all of the other mitigation measures that we have. So being in school every day, I see really inconsistent use of things like air purifiers and opening windows and doors, which has been said is consistent throughout, throughout the district. And so I think that it's really important that as you lift the masks, that you make even more consistent that enforcement. Because now we won't have masks, we won't have distance. And without any of these other things, we don't have any ways that we're keeping ourselves safe. And so we need to have those in place. And I, I feel like we need to see consistent enforcement of that before we take away the masks. And so hopefully that two week period will also be a place in which we can work on our enforcement of that before we take them away. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ross Maron.
Yes, thank you. I, I also, we've all read all of the emails that, that have come in over the last week and I want to thank all of the parents who took the time to write to us. And I agree with Dr. Carol about the, the timing of this announcement by the governor and the commissioner being so close to school vacation week really took away our opportunity to have, have possibly do a community forum on, on this issue that is, is having such an impact on our community. And I regret that, but it was, we've done the best that we, we could. I think that the the practice that we put into place, that we did kind of scramble to get to put in, into place, given the open meeting law that requires 48 hours before we can have a, a public meeting, that we, the same afternoon as the announcement from the commissioner came out, we found, found a convenient time that worked for all three of the members of the policy subcommittee and were able to schedule a meeting for early Monday morning, which we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. And the, the value of that for, for me, and I think for the school committee, of having two meetings where we listened to the essentially similar presentation that Superintendent Jett and Nurse Coughlin presented and, and had our initial conversation about it and, and came up with our recommendation was that then we had some time in between that meeting and tonight to reflect, to get more information, to hear from more people and to think about it more before we came back and, and had an opportunity to discuss the same issue with, with all of us together. And I think that, that opportunity to have those two different conversations strengthens our, our process. I think it just, you know, it was unfortunate opportunity to not have to be able to have a, a community forum. But again, thank you to those folks that, that wrote as, as painful as it was to, to hear about all of the things that people have experienced and, and that we know about. The, the goals that, that, that I have and I think that we share are still safety, wellness, equity for all our children and staff and their families at home, to keep our schools open and limit disruption, to address the unfinished learning of our students. And we heard a wonderful report from Tucker School about how they are working hard to address that and, and, and making strides in that direction and to address the social, emotional, and mental health challenges our students have faced after two years of this pandemic and to protect the high-risk members of our schools and our community. That includes our young children under the age of five, who, including our preschoolers, who aren't old enough to get vaccinated yet, our seniors, immune compromised community members, our students with special needs, our low and moderate income families who've struggled financially with this pandemic, our black and brown neighbors who've borne a large burden, larger than some. And, and, you know, I, I still have some remaining concerns as, as Member White mentioned, you know, the, the tools in our toolbox, we're, we're losing an important one that, that has helped us keep everyone safe during the pandemic. But I, I'm glad to hear Superintendent Jett talking about doubling down on the tools that remain. You know, as we know, space really isn't one of them because of our overcrowding. But fortunately, because of our new beautiful buildings that with windows that open and, and excellent ventilation systems, we have good air quality and we're able to manage that. But we, you know, I, I appreciate the, the movement to double down, to be sure that there's consistent implementation of that. I was also pleased to hear Superintendent Jett mention that they, we have ordered KN95 masks for both staff adult size, but also student size. So that those, those students who choose to continue to mask have that option to use a KN95 mask, which will provide better protection for them if they choose to do that. And then also, I, I think, you know, I, I heard others refer to wanting to build on our safe and supportive schools and to ensure a culture of acceptance and, and anti-bullying. And, and I, I think there's value in having more than the two days left that we have before vacation for our staff to really develop those, those activities and the, that, that work that needs to be done to ensure that everyone feels safe and respected and comfortable with, with what their choices to do. So I, I think that's, that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Craig Henn.
My remarks, I'll keep them brief. I said much of what I need to say on this subject at the policy subcommittee meeting on Monday, but first of all, I'd like to thank Member Ross Denny for voicing exactly what I feel about, what I know actually about this situation. And to Cora for bravely speaking up about something that none of us on this call would know about because we're not sitting in the classrooms and we don't know, you know, the extent to which all of these mitigating factors are being put to use. But I would absolutely make sure that it's as clear and as emphasized as possible in this policy that, that those, the, the windows open, the ventilation and the air purifiers be on constantly. Because as Cora points out, when you take the masks away, you need to make sure that all of those other things are in place. We met at 7:00 AM on Monday. As Member Rose Marin pointed out, that was a time when we could all actually get together before this meeting. In one of the hundreds of emails and texts and calls that I encountered in the past week or so, more than one person said that we were trying to hide something by having a 7:00 AM meeting. I would inform those people that we used to regularly have meetings at 6:45, at 7:00. I go to capital improvement planning committee meetings at 7:00 AM. Select board finance meetings are at 7:00 AM. We get the work of this town done from 7:00 in the morning until with these meetings, well after 10 o'clock at night. Not only have the emails that I've read, as Member Car, Dr. Carol so eloquently pointed out, not only have those emails been in conflict with one another, you know, people on both sides of this issue really making good cases for, for what we should do. But also the, the the opinions of leading, leading people in the field of epidemiology are in conflict as to what we should do. So, you know, even if I were a medical person, which I've been told many times this week I am not, I know that, thank you. I could be on the opposite side from some other medical expert in the field. And so I would like to first of all, thank all of the people who wrote to us. I don't say that lightly. Some of the people were clearly being, were clearly very brave to share very personal stories of their difficulties with us. And I really do appreciate the sharing of those stories. As I said, and I really haven't changed my position, as I said on Monday at the policy subcommittee meeting, I believe that the two day, the two week window is prudent, given that my duty as a school committee member is to do everything I can to promote the safety and the equity available in this, in the school system to all students. That's where I stand. Thanks.
Thanks. Chair Eberhart.
Hi, everyone. I'm taking my hand down too. I want to thank the policy subcommittee for arranging for the meeting on Monday. I want to thank Superintendent Jett and Nurse Coughlin for making that meeting happen. You're all being very kind to our fellow citizens for the emails that were sent to us. You're being very kind. There were many emails that were sent to us that were respectful and thoughtful, that contained personal stories. But there were many emails that were very hurtful and attacking and rude and disrespectful. And in the six years that I've been on this committee, I don't think I've ever been this disheartened in my whole time. I really don't. That's how I feel. I, I recognize that I'm old and I'm out of touch, as the citizen spoke. But that's who I am as a person. And to read those emails, to read the attack nature of them, to be subjected over and over again to that kind of rhetoric is in my mind unconscionable and non-negotiable. To know that I've heard that things were posted on other websites about school committee members, that to be shared with me, to be attacking them, to not know their personal stories, what they've experienced in their life, and then to come here and to respectfully treat each other as we always have, and the citizens. I, I, I am at a loss for words as to how I feel about the way people communicated to us this week. And so while I can thank people for communicating to us, I can also communicate my despair at the nature of that communication. These are six people, including myself, who live in your town, who you might one day see walking around, who have children of their own and families of their own. And to think that you thought it was okay to dump that venom to dump that venom into the space is not okay with me. And I apologize to all of my school committee members and to those of you who are being attacked in other venues. I recognize that this is a hard decision, that I have always known that the hardest part about moving off this ramp and onto a different ramp is dealing with the fear and the uncertainty of the pandemic. And I think that we have approached this as a, as a, as a country and, and as a Commonwealth incorrectly, because we always should have come at this from an educational perspective, right? That these were always tools that we could use, that masks were one of them, and that we needed to approach it from that piece, that we go into, use the mask when we need it and not use it when we don't, because we don't know what the future holds when it comes to pandemics or anything related to this current pandemic that we happen to still be living in. And I think that's the unfortunate part, that Desi has constantly missed the ball on to educate people, to bring them together and not post things on their website about dashboards, right? To think about, I'm an educational institution, I'm an instructional leader. This is what I need to do to help people move past the fear. This is what I need to do to help them understand how they can still be effective, but also move to a new stage. Right? That's, that's, that's sort of where I am. For myself, I understand people want to move past the masks. You know, I actually do work in a school. I actually teach with a mask on. I actually know what it's like to spend hours talking and not being able to, to hear actually, because the ventilation systems are so loud. And so I, I respect the fact that we, people need time, and that's the thing that did not, that is not coming across here, right? It's just like, yeah, you just want to rip everything away and hope that everyone's going to be okay. You need to, you need to fold it in so that people have a little bit of cushion to feel comfortable, to be able to move past this into the next phase. So for myself, I would be okay with moving it to the seventh, but I respect what the vote will finally be. I think that moving it to one week past when we come back, given what happened, that many of the infections during the Christmas time happened actually during the, the holiday break, and then carried on into those first weeks of January would be helpful, but I totally respect everyone's. I think that would be a compromise, a way to sort of recognize that people need time. You can't just assume that people are going to be able to manage it. They need time to deal with the situation. And also, you're going to still have to wear a mask if you have COVID when you come back for five days, if you, if you come back before the 10 days. So that would be my thoughts about this. I think we just need to be more mindful of the fact that people need time, and we need to respect that and not mock it. Not mock what people need time to get used to something new and give them that grace. There is an end in sight, God willing, there's an end in sight. And I don't think five days or 10 days after two years is that much to ask to come together as a community. Thank you, Dr. Carol, again. Dr. Craighead and Member Rose Marin for all your work on policy. It is very much appreciated by myself.
Thanks, Chair Eberhart. Member Rose Marin, go ahead, and then I'll just sort of share some of what I'm thinking.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to circle back, which I neglected to mention when, when I was speaking. I would, I would also be willing to consider a compromise of moving to March 7th as a return, our end of masking date that gives us that week passed. Five school days passed when students come back, but it gives the staff a net time to prepare the, their activities and programs and thoughts and students for what is a big transition and hopefully a joyous one for many, but I, but also an anxious one for others. So I, I just wanted to chime in that I, I would be open to considering that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Member Rose Marin. I'm going to go ahead and just like read something else that I had written out because I have struggled so much since Monday, before Monday, since Monday, to think about all of this. And then, no, I don't feel well, so also want to make sure I can get through some things I want to say. So bear with me. And I apologize in advance if this isn't very coherent. That will just reveal my inner state of being. So like all of us, I've taken in a lot of information over the past few days, including a lot of these different perspectives that have been mentioned, as well as the latest guidance from the Department of Public Health. I recognize that we are, I have recognized that we are coming up to a transition point in the pandemic. I want to make sure that we take the opportunity to allow masks to be optional when that is relatively safe to do, and that we're also prepared to require masks again in the future if a new variant or surge calls for that. Dr. Perkins mentioned that, several of you have mentioned that. Some in their emails to us have pointed out that the Massachusetts Medical Society supports the shift to masks becoming optional. And their president, Dr. Carol Allen, said last week, cautiously relaxing in-school masking mandates, given recent encouraging public health metrics, is appropriate at this time. But she also said in the same statement, "We must watch local metrics closely and be prepared to swiftly reinstate all proven preventive measures if the number of positive cases spike in a school or community." So that's important context that I am thinking about. Dr. Allen said something else that struck me yesterday. "I'm moving forward as COVID-19 metrics improve." This is something else I'm thinking about. This is a quote from Dr. Allen. "Importantly, we must recognize that the physical, emotional and financial recovery from COVID-19 will not be the same for all. Those who are most medically susceptible and those who are part of historically marginalized populations and communities of color that bore a disproportionate level of infection and its social, economic and health consequences must remain a focal point of recovery and prevention efforts," unquote. I've said a number of times that our diversity is our strength in Milton. I really believe that, and I know that many of us moved here to be part of a diverse community. I think we're beginning to have more frank discussions as a district and about how systemic racism plays out in our schools, and we're taking steps to address that on different levels with much more work to be done. I, I, I've been grappling with how to consider this piece as a community and how we're moving forward now in relation to all the other information that I've also been trying to process. I believe that policymaking should be shaped by evidence and values. Everyone knows I'm not a medical or public health professional like Dr. Craighead. I'm not a medical doctor. I have to be informed by those who are, and when they're not in perfect agreement, I have to take in competing ideas and try to make sense of that. I was raised by my parents with the strong value to care about the most vulnerable among us. So I'm weighing the unknown costs and benefits of creating a short delay on making masks optional to mitigate the unpredictable effects of students returning to school from wherever they spend vacation. I understand that we don't know for sure that there would be a spike or a bump in cases after vacation, and there's mixed evidence on that. My biggest concern right now is that we need to support one another through what comes next as a community. I knew before the Governor and Commissioner's announcement last week that it was not a question of if we would move to masks being optional, but when. I personally consider the caution of delaying masks being optional by one week after the vacation or even two weeks. I consider that to be reasonable to give us the best possible chance of undertaking this transition as smoothly as possible. But I understand and realize that many people do not consider that to be reasonable. Yesterday, the new guidance came out from the Department of Public Health on masking for vulnerable individuals indoors. That's been mentioned in the presentation. As a vulnerable individual myself with type 1 diabetes, I'm in the personal process, I can candidly share, of psychologically adjusting to accept data that should reassure me about one-way masking, that it still provides protection when I wear a high-quality mask. As a parent of a pre-K student, I empathize with those parents of Milton Public Schools' pre-K kids that are too young to be vaccinated, who have reached out imploring us to keep the mask mandate in place. So just by sharing those two personal things about myself, I hope you can see that this isn't easy, and I understand that. I know that it's not easy. In processing the complexity of all this information, I'm no longer convinced that the potential but uncertain benefits of a delay outweigh the costs in terms of escalating polarization that I sincerely worry would ultimately undermine our ability to support our most vulnerable community members who have valid reasons to feel uncomfortable or fearful of the change. Considering that and considering the combination of mitigation strategies that we do have, I think we should move forward with the transition to masks being optional. If not on February 28th, then by March 7th at the latest, with the following clear stipulations. We continue to encourage anyone not yet vaccinated to get vaccinated, including for those eligible to get a second shot and/or a booster. Home test kits will be made available to everyone to take with them on the break, as Superintendent Jet shared, to voluntarily take one of the tests on Sunday, the 27th, the day before returning to school. Please participate in this effort to bring, prevent bringing COVID from your vacation into school. Also, families who have not yet opted into the home testing program should do so for March and April to help make this transition as smooth as possible. We should all be participating in the, in the home testing program for the next two months if we want to have masks optional. Milton Public Schools, as has been mentioned, will provide free high filtration masks to any student or staff member who wants them. Masks optional would mean that anyone who prefers to still wear a mask is fully supported in that choice. Others have said this, but I'm going to restate it. We will need to proactively message this and be alert to possible bullying or ostracization of students who remain masked. Every family should discuss this with their children, especially those who will choose to go unmasked. And it should be reinforced by all faculty and staff in the buildings every day. All teachers and staff will also be supported if they choose to continue wearing a mask. I've received a lot of messages from parents who want their children to, quote, "see their teachers' faces." Well, we need to keep in mind that teachers are free to continue wearing masks if they choose to for any reason. And they don't even have to have a reason. They can just choose to continue wearing a mask, and if your child's teacher continues masking, that's their choice. We need to double down on the consistency of ventilation as a mitigation strategy, as Cora and others have mentioned, as Mr. Jet mentioned. All classrooms will have their air purifiers on at all times with the windows cracked at all times every day. We should all be public, following the DPH guidance. So if your child is not vaccinated, they should continue to wear a mask, even if they would prefer not to, or they should get vaccinated. They should choose to wear the mask, to follow that guidance. And then, of course, this has also been mentioned, but which is an important piece. Per state guidance, all individuals who test positive for COVID will still wear masks for days six or 10 after they return to school, even if they choose to not wear masks the rest of the time. So I've been wrestling with this a lot because I know that a lot of people I deeply respect will probably be disappointed that this is where I've ended up after all my ambivalence in soul searching. I feel badly about that. I just believe that, given everything we know, we should try to keep this issue from tearing our community apart. And we should instead focus on the solid strategies we have in place to keep people safe, even when masking is optional. If there's not support on this committee for transitioning on February 28th, I definitely understand. Then I believe we should do just the one-week extension of the mandate becoming mask optional on March 7th.
So I'd like to make a motion in the spirit of...
Sorry, Member Ross Denny has...
She had her hand up.
I do have my hand up. Okay, sorry, I didn't see it.
Oh, no, it's okay, because, you know, Margaret, you, you teed this up, and I wasn't going to say anything to the community. And we've, as we've received many messages, and many of them were respectful. There were comments made about school committee members and their children. There's nothing that we're talking about today that is worth making someone feel like our community is going to be polarized, and that's why they should talk about what they see someone do with their children. And for those of you who are on here who did not, for those of you in the community that were not part of that, thank you very much. But as someone like Dr. Carol, who is willing to do the research, read your emails, hold community forums, and, and volunteer her time to do what she believes is in the best interest of your children, she deserves more than feeling threatened by the same community she wishes to serve. And I don't take this lightly when I say, anyone who's threatened inadvertently should be ashamed of themselves. And I know there's going to be a message tomorrow that, you know, Member Ross Denny should be ashamed that she didn't want our kids to take our masks off today. That's not the case. We get it. I, I hope that anyone who's listening today knows that we get it. But you can, we can get it, and you can get it and be respectful. It's just, it's not right. And I know that will not change. If your heart is that way, that you feel it's okay to talk about people's children, that's just who you are, and it's a reflection of your moral and values. It is not mine. And, and Dr. Carol, I don't think anyone who heard what you had to say would ever question your judgment and your opinion. And, and for people who are like, this is going to polarize the community if you don't do it right now, I am sorry for you. I think Milton is a wonderful town. There's a lot of people who've cared about my kids in spite of what they look like or what they know, and they're people who care about me. And I will choose to spend my life...
You picked that thing up that's on the floor.
Thinking about how many people care about our town and care for me as a person and my family. And I wish the best for all of your families, but leave people's kids out of this. It's just not right. And, and Dr. Carol, you should have never felt that you couldn't voice your opinion and find that people would respect it.
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Carol, there's nothing in, and there's no way that any human could be disappointed in anything that you do for the gracious way that you conduct yourself in this world. And that's the truth. We were elected to make decisions. We were elected to make hard decisions. We were elected to do what was right by the larger community, not just what we feel personally, but to think about the collective and to try to bring people to some conclusion that we can all be comfortable with keeping safety at the heart and the center and equity at the heart and the center of what we do. And I think that, that, that is our responsibility, regardless of how people feel about that in the community. That's what we were elected to do. We're a legislative body. We're not a healthcare body. We're not any of those things. We're a legislative body elected to make policy decisions, finance decisions, and to supervise and oversee administration, administration. So I appreciate you share so many things with all of us in the community. And that's what I was saying before, that people just don't know what they don't know. You're making a lot of assumptions about things in your anger and your own frustration that you just don't know.
Really quickly, and then we'll go to you, Member White, but I mean, thank you, Margaret, and Beth, for what you just said. I want to just make clear that I don't feel I've been sort of intimidated into evolving and how I think about this. I would actually make sure everyone knows that's not the case.
We know, we know that.
I think I'm genuinely trying to stay open to learning. And that's what we're all doing in our own ways. And as we've all shared in different ways, it's complicated. So we're all kind of... So we're all kind of coming at it a little bit differently, even though I know we also share a lot of the same values as we strive to represent, you know, the whole community, including the seven hundred people who signed the petition and everyone else who hasn't signed it. So anyway, thank you both for your comments. And, uh, Member White, you were about to say something.
Well, I will just share that back when, um, former Superintendent Mary Gormley was, was in charge and we were making the decision about whether we were going to go to stay remote or whether we were going to go to hybrid. I was the only committee member that stayed, voted to stay remote. You know, that was my decision. A lot of, obviously, people did not agree with that. I was fine. Uh, we moved on and, you know, I, I didn't feel any backlash at all from members in the community. So, you know, you, no one's going to agree with every decision we make. And the longer we serve, the more decisions we make and the more people may disagree with us and so be it. But again, um, in the spirit of compromise, I'm gonna, um, make a motion that, um, we extend the mask-wearing in the Milton Public Schools policy until, um, the last day of masking at Milton Public Schools would be May, excuse me, March fifth. And we'll come back to school on, um, March seventh with mask optional.
Thank you. Okay, second.
Second, I would just, I would just amend the, the motion if I may to March fourth.
March fourth, okay, sorry. I didn't look at my calendar.
And I am, I don't know if I'm, if you raise my hand.
Thank you.
I, I actually still believe that it should be two weeks because by the time people realize they're ill and might think to test, it will be more than the five days. But, um, I guess we'll continue with the vote.
I was going to say the same thing. So I'm not going to vote for this, but I respect, certainly, um, what you said, Lizzie, um, what you've gone through, where your thinking is now, and the, and the rest of my colleagues on the board. But, but, um, we'll get to that with, when we get to the vote.
Okay, um, does anyone else have a comment or anything to say before taking a vote on the motion on the table from Member White? Member Rose Marin and then Chair Everhart.
I, I just, I also just want to thank you, Dr. Carol, for your leadership through this challenging issue and, and, um, your care and thoughtfulness, um, around all of this. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, were you going to say something before?
Yeah, Dr. Carol, I guess I was just, um, um, trying to think about, um, I don't know what the word is because my brain is sort of tired too. Um, the, the, the process here. So we, we had, we had, we had a recommendation from Policy Subcommittee that came before the full school committee, and we, we discussed that in an open meeting, but we never took a vote on that. And then we had, um, um, I'm just trying to figure out, are we, like, following the, 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 the process here properly? I don't want to do something.
I think what we would be doing is, um, well, so for one thing, we are considering revising the current mask policy.
Right.
I think my understanding, but please, someone else tell me if this is not true. Who's been around longer, but I think that the recommendation that we brought from Policy on Monday was the recommendation to open the discussion today.
Okay.
The motion that Member White just made is the motion that is voted upon as a revision to the current mask policy.
You don't have to do anything with the recommendation. It just is, right? We voted to recommend something. And now we have a motion on the table, uh, and so-
Thank you very much, both of you, for helping me remember. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, so the, um, well, this will be a roll call vote on the motion to move our policy to masks optional effective March seventh. Um, okay. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
No.
Chair Everhart?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
No.
And I'm a yes. So that motion passes. And I think that's the conclusion of our policy report. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Policy Subcommittee, again, for all of your work. Thank you all very much. And thank you very much for participating in discussion tonight and sharing ideas, thoughts, and, um, and feelings about the situation, a respectful thought and manner. I really appreciate that very much.
So it's time for finance now?
I'm supposed to do the chair's report since we skipped it last week. But I know that you have to go to work. I will be very-
No, it's all right. We've just gotten through less of the agenda than I thought we had. That's what I was disappointed in.
I can, um, so on the chair's report is, I believe that if I do this, it's going to share properly, but who knows what you might actually see when I pull it up. Okay. So, um, one of our responsibilities besides setting policy and on finance is to evaluate and, um, assess how the district is doing. There is a, a specific rubric and process that is outlined by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that, um, guides this process. Um, when superintendents run their first three years of running a district, it is recommended by DESI that you have, you do this, um, you do the cycle every year, um, and for the first three years. So you do a mid-year check-in and then, and then a summative, and then the next year you do a mid-year check-in and a summative, and a mid-year check-in and a summative. I recognize, we recognize as a committee that some of the, obviously, goals that we have are multiple years, right? So, um, this is really just, um, an opportunity for us to do a mid-cycle check-in with the district regarding how, how things are going based upon the rubric, um, supplied by DESI. So I put together this little document, um, that I shared with all of you, and also made a folder that had the rubric and everything inside of it. So we can very quickly go over this. And basically, it's a five-step cycle of continuous improvement for the district, right? It looks at a self-assessment that our superintendent would do usually in the summer. And then they would analyze that with their leadership team, set goals and make a plan. They would have the implementation of that plan. You would do a formative mid-cycle review, which is where we're at now. And then you would have a summative evaluation at the end of the cycle. Uh, Member White, I'm happy to entertain comments as we go through if you'd like.
I just was wondering, my name wasn't, isn't part of the, it says, "school committee members." You forgot me, Margaret.
Oh, how could I forget you, my longtime friend? How much have we been through together, huh? Okay, sorry about that. You know, I'm not always that smart sometime, you know? Um, anyway, so, um, basically, the timeline for a one-year cycle would be to establish the goals and focus indicators in, in fall to do the mid-year cycle sometime around March, and then to have a formative, a summative assessment in June. The goal of our school committee meetings this year was to have meetings that allowed us to gather evidence, as we want to call it, um, to, to show whether or not the district was meeting its goals, right? We, we wouldn't need that much additional material if school committee meetings presented, um, on data, presented on site councils, had presentations from other aspects of the district that sort of supported what the superintendent's goals are. Um, so you will see that, um, that's where we're at right now. And I'm hoping that you all feel that we've had some pretty productive school committee long meeting, sorry, that have gave, given us a lot of information about the district. When you think about assessing a mid-year cycle review for the superintendent and for the district, you want to think about the, the areas that are outlined here, one, two, and three. And then these areas, A, B, C, and D, are areas of the, uh, rubric, um, that DESI provides. Evidence to use and consider as you think about the mid-year cycle review are the things that I put here on the document. I'm not going to read them all because it's late in the evening and everyone is really tired. And then some of the things that we might want to request for Superintendent to provide us, just in case those things weren't part of um, any of our presentations, were samples of leadership team agendas and things he discussed with his leadership team, and then reflection from staff and from himself on how things are going, right? So the evaluation process is a public process. It's kind of strange and feels a little bit awkward when you're kind of doing it, but is a public process. So, school, and I can't see you also. If you want to talk, you should talk. I cannot see your hands. I cannot see anything. I'm rambling. I'm in my New York mode now. So if you have something to say, just say it. Okay, you're okay. Um, so we will review the DESI documents on evaluation, and we will do a mid-year formative, and we'll use the mid-year formative assessment review tool to help us. So of course, you know, I had hoped that we would be able to do the, um, checklist and those comments to, to, to myself by February twenty-fifth, but that's not going to happen. And then either present it to the committee on the second or the sixteenth. But I think what we're really doing is we're going to be around more towards the end of March before we get to all of this. So I'm going to stop sharing because I hate sharing my screen. Okay, um, so that's where we sit with the, with the mid-year cycle review. Like I said, it feels a little bit, um, different when you do it the first time. But it really is a, a, a tool for us to really consider, how do we think we're doing on all the goals that we set out for ourselves, um, as a district? Um, I will remind you all that all of these things have to happen in an open meeting. So the way that it usually works is that you all will, um, uh, you know, look over the tool, make comments and things. You would send them to myself. I would compile them into a document, share them all with you, and then we would discuss it at an open meeting. But we wouldn't discuss it amongst ourselves outside of an open meeting. So that is my brief, um, I hope, somewhat informative presentation, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Because it's late, as Dr. Craighead would say. And, you know, in a couple hours, I'll be outside walking with the dog at five in the morning, so. Does anyone have any questions about that? And I'm happy to entertain questions, written comments that you can send, and we can have a, another discussion.
So just the same processes we've used in the past.
Correct.
Where we go through each one of the-
It actually, so no, actually, in a, in a, in a four, in a mid-year cycle review, it's not that process.
Oh, great.
It's a much more, um, truncated process. We are just really looking at a overview of how things are going. And if, if the rest of the year, there's something you really want to focus on, that you pull that out. So you think we're missing something. We're not hitting, um, something that we really thought we needed to address during this first part of the academic year.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Well, thank you all for, for that. And then we can reach out to Superintendent Jet if there's any information that we would like to have that we don't feel we've got enough information about from, um, from our school committee meetings. Does that sound good? Anyone have any questions? All right, thank you and all. And we will move on to finance, um, Dr. Craighead.
Okay, so we had a finance committee meeting, was that just yet, yesterday? And, um, we, uh, went over the, um, third and fourth quarter reports from, um, FY twenty-one. Um, at our next meeting, we're going to have the, um, first and second quarter reports of FY twenty-two. Um, also on that agenda for our next meeting, which will be after, um, school break week, we'll, uh, we'll get an update on ARPA. We're going to consider the substitute pay. The, um, Assistant Superintendent and, uh, uh, Finance and Superintendent Jet and their team are going to look at, uh, you know, substitute pay, uh, for comparable districts, et cetera. Um, I do know that, for instance, Quincy pays, uh, one-twelve, I think, a day, and we pay ninety. So, uh, given the difficulty, uh, that we're getting, having in terms of, you know, getting substitutes, although we've been managing, um, uh, it may, some of it may have to do with pay. And in fact, given the minimum wage increases, if you divide the number of hours by ninety dollars at some, I don't think we're behind now, but I think we're going to be. I'm not even positive about that. Uh, also importantly, at that next meeting, we're going to consider fees. Namely, fee increases potentially in transportation, athletics, clubs and activities, pre-K. So, um, everything will be on the table. But, uh, all I have left is, uh, approval of vendor warrants, uh, for this evening. I'd like to make a motion to approve both, uh, vendor warrant number thirty-three dated, February tenth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And, uh, vendor warrant number thirty-four, uh, payable on, um, February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Um, Chair Everhart?
Yes.
And Member White?
Abstained.
Abstained. Okay, so we have a five-zero-one. Thank you all very much.
Um, Dr. Craighead and, uh, Assistant Superintendent Dexter. So in the midst of all of the emails that we were receiving from, uh, uh, citizens about the, um, face covering policy, we did receive an email from a citizen that was inquiring about federal grants. And I don't know if you saw that emails, uh, Superintendent Jet or Assistant Superintendent Dexter about the, um, federal grants and how they apply to COVID. I will try my very best to go back and find the email, but the person had very specific questions about the, that. Yes, uh, Assistant Superintendent Dexter, do you recall seeing that email?
I, I did see it. I just haven't had an opportunity-
No, of course you haven't.
Respond to it, but I did see it. Acceptance of grants was done at Finance yesterday.
Okay.
Um, we tend to accept the non-entitlement grants because entitlement grants just roll over every year. And I, I was behind with the reports just due to everything else going on, but, um, we will be up to date-
Right.
The next Finance meeting.
And that, no, it was, um, the person had inquired because we have a specific policy that relates to donated money and, and how the school committee votes on that. But, and we do vote on all those things. And I told the person that it was in Finance, but there was something very specific about the Esser money. So I, I will try to remember to get back to that, but I thought it was a kind of an important question as we move into the budget conversations, um, Dr. Craighead, to, to clarify that, um, the use of those.
Yeah, I have that email. I'll take a look at it as well, but I know we've had several presentations on Esser.
Yeah, so maybe we can just, they probably haven't seen them, right? Exactly. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, Doc, um, Member Rose Marin, do you have a facilities update for us?
Uh, I just noticed that on the agenda.
Do not have one, because we can just say no.
I'll, I'll tell you, I'll tell you a quick highlight of the meeting we had just before this meeting. The, and really it's the highlight, is we had a presentation by, um, engineer from the Department of Public Works, Marina Fernandez, came to speak with us about a project that they are, uh, working on, called a stormwater best management proposal. And it's to, um, construct, um, a stormwater management system on Milton Public School property back behind Cunningham Collycutt School in the woods, not where the, 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 um, CC Green space is, to the right of that as you're looking if you're back to the building, right by the bend in the driveway. There's, they've got a long way to go with, with this work. They had one meeting with neighbors and, um- um did um answered a number of questions, but we encouraged them to um uh meet with more neighbors and um put together um some information about what would happen. It it's to manage the storm water that goes into the Unquity Brook, uh which then heads into the Nippon Zid, I believe. Um and so um I I think e- environmentally, it's it's a um good project. Um and it has educational opportunities for students at Cunningham Collycut Schools. Um but um we encourage um Ms. Fern- Fernandez to go back and uh speak with more neighbors and and come back with um some additional support from from the neighbors as well as um frequently asked questions and um some information about what would happen if we didn't do this project. But the school committee needs to approve that project ultimately, um because it's on school land. Um so we'll, we're gonna have her come back, I think it's in two months um to the facilities committee after she's gathered that more information. And um if we feel like it's ready at that time, we'll take a vote in facilities and 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 have Ms. Fernandez come to a school committee meeting where we can all hear that her presentation and take a vote. That's it.
Thank you, Member Rose Marin and Member White for um reaching out to her. When I received the email that she wanted to come to this meeting, I was like, ah! Um I I knew that we wouldn't have any time. She probably thinks I'm crazy. Um but thank you so much for um for dealing with um for for affording her the time to come to facilities. I really appreciate that. All right, so the last thing on our agenda rate is uh approval of the minutes that we received for our February second, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Um did everyone have the opportunity to look at those minutes?
And move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Are there any changes, adjustments, additions or subtractions you'd like to make? Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote. Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Remember Ross Denny?
Yes.
Uh Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Margaret Everhart, yes. Wonderful. I don't believe that we have any old business. Our next agenda, um I think will be on the meeting of March second, um which will be the Wednesday that we return after the um February break. We are slight um slated to have a presentation by the Special Education Department at that meeting. I have not checked in with Superintendent Jep, and I I'm assuming that Susan Micali will be coming to the meeting. And if not, um you will let us know. Um what are the what are their committees would like to report out at our March second meeting?
I'll see. Um go ahead, Beth.
No, I should raise my hand. Curriculum and Instruction Advisory.
Wonderful. Policy and the curriculum. Anyone else? Health and Wellness?
Yes.
Okay, Health and Wellness. Um Dr. Craighead, will there be any movement on the budget um at from like where we stood after our warrants?
Uh pro- probably not. There might be a little according to to Amy, but there might be anything really to report, but um uh Assistant Superintendent Dexter?
No, I just know that um the Finance Director for the town, I believe, is reporting to the Select Board Finance Committee tomorrow morning. So I'll hope to tune into that, but um as well as the interim town administrator, Anne Marie Fagan was appointed yesterday and her main um task is to work on the budget. Um so I met with her, um had a conversation with her. I met with Karen today. And um I think that they'll really dive in to that. So there may be something by March second coming out of the town um to the Finance Committee.
Yes, Dr. Carol. Um Assistant Superintendent Dexter, is that, do you have an update on when that transition is taking place?
I believe um Ms. Fagan starts tomorrow. And Mr. Denna, his last day is the twenty-fifth, so there will be about a little over a week overlap for transition.
Dr. Craighead, do you think that we're actually going to be able to have an annual budget hearing in April on the budget?
Uh perhaps, yes.
Okay, so perhaps, maybe. Okay.
I just want to welcome back Anne Marie Fagan. And we're very fortunate that she's willing to step in as interim at this crucial juncture in the budget year.
So one one more question. Superintendent Dexter, do we um are we going on to that meeting tomorrow morning or no? Is that just not us?
We are not posted. I don't think they um intended to ask the school department questions or anything. Just when Karen mentioned to me that she'd be showing them where it stands right now, I just really was interested in seeing what that report looked like. I do know that um we um Superintendent Jet and and I and um Superintendent Sheehan, I believe, have some meetings um scheduled for the morning, so they might overlap a little. But um she was prepared that if I couldn't, that she may be able to share that with me after.
Okay.
She shares it with her board.
I'm not looking to go to another meeting.
No, I don't think that's necessary. I can try to tune in and report back, or I'm sure be recorded.
Okay. All right. Well, if you think of anything else that you want to add to the um the agenda for next time, just let me know. Um before we sign off, um I just want to thank you all again for this evening's um conversation. And I really want to thank Superintendent Jet, Assistant Superintendents Dexter and Sheehan, Kim Coughlin, all the entire Milton Public School staff, um teachers, paras, custodial staff, administrators. We know that you you are living this every day and we know you are really doing your very best. Um and we appreciate all you've done to keep school open, to make um as we have seen from all of our site council presentations, learning joyful despite some of the challenges that we faced. Um and we look forward to and 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 I really want to say what Dr. Meneel Jamai said, right, that the way we were doing things before wasn't always best for everyone. And learning, that was the question that we asked so many people last year. What did you learn from the pandemic and what can we take with us as we move forward? And I think Superintendent Jet has always reflected that in his presentations. And when he comes to school committee and he shares that, he's always so gracious and kind and thoughtful to the community. Um and I want to just thank all of you for that work. And I'm sure the uh I, yeah. There aren't enough thanks, really, um for all that you've done. So I guess we will adjourn from this meeting. If I'd like a second?
Second.
Okay. This will be a real call vote to say good night. I hope you all have a peaceful February break. Um Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Everhart, yes. Thank you all. Have a peaceful night. Thank you again.
Vacation, everyone.
You too, everyone. Take care.